Thank you. I would like to welcome you all to the Monday, February 8th, Mayor and City Council meeting. And I will lead us in the pledge of allegiance this evening. I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Next on the agenda is a consent agenda. It's my understanding from Marley Press, our city clerk, that there has been a request to remove item two from the consent agenda. Do I have approval for the remaining items?
Motion to approve.
Approval by Councilmember Judy. Do I have a second? Second by Councilmember Hall. All those in favor, please raise your hands. And it passes unanimously. The next item on the agenda would then be number two, which is the approval of final plat, 20205212 at 1070 Green Street. Councilmember Palermo.
Thank you, Mayor Henry. I just actually have a clarifying question for staff. So basically, in reviewing the plat, it mentions that there is a utilities easement. And other than, and I believe if I'm interpreting it correctly, other than the utilities easement, there is, it's a private road, not public. So basically, my question is twofold. Question number one is, is there any financial responsibility of taxpayers in the future for any reason, given that easement? That's question number one. Question number two is, given there's an easement, does that mean it will be gated? Or does that mean it will not be gated? In which case, citizens would have the right or the opportunity to walk on it?
Mayor Henry, would you like me to address those questions?
Yes, please.
This is Lenore Bromberg, Inter Director of Community Development. Yes, there is an easement that goes across there. This is a private drive that will be maintained by the homeowners association associated with the townhomes that are included on the plat. The easement is there in order to provide an easement for the stormwater utility and the water utility that are underneath that roadway. So everything is built to city standard, but there is no maintenance requirement by the city of any of those facilities. Does that answer your questions, Councilmember Palermo?
It does. That answers all my questions. I appreciate it. And I'll certainly be supporting a motion to approve if that's what the comm dev liaison chooses to do.
And also, just to clarify, you did ask about a gate. There is no gate proposed on the plat today. If they were to come in to propose one, it would have to meet all the requirements for any other private drive that want to install a gate, which includes fire access and turnaround and so forth. I do not believe that it meets any of those standards today. But there have been no proposals for a gate to be installed in there.
Thank you.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Yes, Mayor Henry. Motion to approve the approval of the final plat, 20205212 at 1070 Green Street.
We have a motion by Councilmember Hall. Do I have a second? Second by Councilmember Judy. All those in favor, please raise your hands. And it passes unanimously. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is under the mayor's report. We've got a great presentation tonight. I'll give you a little bit of the background. In my racial equity task force that we've met a number of times, five or six times today. And what we've been doing lately is we've been laying the foundation. So this group is getting familiar with public safety, the various functions of the city of Roswell, how that interacts with, for example, school police, things of that nature, so that this group has a clear idea on what the city of Roswell can do moving forward and what perhaps we can influence other government entities. So one of the things we asked was that we do a presentation of the history of Roswell as it relates to racial equity. These folks did a great job. As a result of that, I've had a number of our committee members ask if they can present it to their church audiences, et cetera. And I wanted to make sure that you all got a chance to see it and hear it. It's a wonderful presentation. And one of the other things I would like to point out is that the city of Roswell is very conscientious about painting the true, the real history, the whole history, not just part of the history of the city of Roswell. So this presentation was a result, in some aspects, to that request. And so I will let, I'm not sure, Jeff, are you gonna take it this way? Or Dina or Elaine? I'm not sure who's gonna lead off on this.
Hello, good evening, Mayor. I believe I am first on the agenda, so I will, it's my pleasure to go before Elaine, if that's okay?
Terrific, thank you.
Great, thank you. Good evening. I am going to share my screen, just one moment. Okay. Let me try it one more time. All right, I apologize. Best, this is what happens with technology sometimes. Well, I apologize, everyone. For some reason, it's not going to come up.
Malone, can you pull it?
Help us on the way, the cavalry is coming.
Okay, no problem, thank you.
Thank you.
Can everyone see this screen?
Yes.
Okay. For some reason, it's just having a hard time going to the full screen mode. But if everyone can see off of this, though, I will go off of this, if that's okay with everyone. Okay. Well, I tell you what, I'm going to go ahead and get started, so I do not want to delay. But good evening, Mayor, Council. It is my privilege to speak to you regarding the important role museums may have when discussing race and equity. Hi, I'm sorry, we have backup, just one second, my apologies. Sure, go ahead. Thank you for your patience, everyone. Okay, there we go. All right, thank you so much, appreciate that. Okay, let's try again. Good evening, Mayor, Council, again, thank you so much. It's my privilege to speak to you regarding the important role museums may have when discussing race and equity. I plan to provide tonight, I plan to provide tonight a brief overview into three key topics with the aim of hopefully providing encouragement for discussion. Firstly, I will offer a summary of the background and status of interpretation at Roswell Historic House Museums in regard to race. Secondly, I would like to discuss the process and challenges museums face when engaging in hard conversations, sensitive history. And lastly, I will propose a picture for future vision and meaning when it comes to the question of Roswell Historic Assets and moving forward. The three house museums of Roswell are longstanding features in the community in which the city has greatly invested, recognizing the importance of preservation story to community identity. Bullock Hall was the first to be purchased by the city in 1978, followed by the Smith Plantation in 1985, and then Barrington Hall in 2005. From a broad interpretation standpoint, they highlight an overview picture of those that established Roswell, namely, the entrepreneurial King family that spearheaded the mill operations, the aristocratic Bullock family that invested in the mill, and then the Smith family, which represents the plantation farm or focused on agriculture. Like many Anabellum homes, the key interpretation has focused on the white landowner family. But how have these houses approached a more holistic picture when it comes to the racial, social, cultural, and even economic history of Roswell? Overall, staff and supporters have purposefully recognized the need to engage more so in these stories than other similar house museums of their size. There have been key milestones, such as reconstruction and exhibit installations, interpreting the enslaved experience. A dog trot house representing recreated slave borders, and even placed on top of the archaeological foundations of original borders, was built at Bullock Hall in 2000. Smith Plantation staff converted an outbuilding to display and exhibit on the geological history and record of those owned by the family, while also providing context within the bigger picture of Georgia history. The furnished kitchen and bedroom of baby cotton at Smith Plantation reveals a 20th century racial and domestic history expanded in Roswell, and even from North Fulton. Smith Plantation also recently, with items online from the Atlanta History Center, curated a basket exhibit telling the story of both African-American and Native American culture and contribution. Period pieces on permanent display, such as a linen cupboard on the second floor of Barrington Hall, showcased the craftsmanship of skilled enslaved workers. All sites have also engaged in programs demonstrating traditional lifeways and culture, such as previous drum circle at Barrington Hall discussing West African musical influences, and a monthly open-heart cooking program at Smith Plantation. While the historic homes have taken commendable steps in addressing and incorporating these conversations, I would argue that there is still important work to strive for, particularly in light of 2020. The past year, with all we have observed and experienced as part of the national dialogue on race, produced a firm challenge and a sense of responsibility for museum staff. This has been a key theme of conversation within professional circles, the museum organizations across the nation, and begs several questions. The headlines you see on the slide are just small examples easily accessible online. So how do we move forward, and what are the ongoing challenges? Are we being thorough and giving intentional voice to those who fall between the historical records? Are we doing our best in engagement in how we present information? Are we understanding to the person in front of us? The topic has been and continues to be studied in depth within museum education interpretation, yet 2020 truly was a call to reassess. Whether recognized or not, historic sites are often places people look to for understanding the context of current events, providing perspectives of exactly how we got to where we are today. I think we all understand that we are dealing with hard conversations, sensitive and difficult history, which requires all engaged to recognize our shared humanity and past. If done well, in my opinion, it is led with empathy, and then hopefully produces further empathy. On an applied basis, research has provided recommended practices, which are called the five Rs when interpreting tough history and the inherent challenges. I think you will find much of it revolves around the environment and experience that you create. Reception. Reception involves the first communication a guest experiences, sometimes before they even step onto your site. It is being upfront with them by providing disclaimer statements about what they are going to experience when visiting the historic site. It is establishing as welcoming an introduction as possible and allowing guests to prepare both mentally, emotionally, if necessary. This involves understanding motivation for attendance and clearing a gateway for interaction. If you do this correctly, you transition in a positive manner to a learning mindset with the individual and guest. Keep in mind as well that this even begins with marketing and communication before they step onto your site. Are you clear in collateral and on your website about your interpretational approach and mission? Resistance. Because we are human, we need to anticipate a variety of responses from guests, even potentially aggressively negative ones. Those who guide have to be willing to set aside their own ego and bias to allow reactions to be voiced and aired in a respectful manner for all involved. This takes skill and experience. Potentially negative interactions usually indicate a guest is struggling with a learning or a reflective crisis that is often in conflict with their personal worldview and bias. Repetition. Thoughtful consideration of the whole experience should create a learning setting where the visitor has the opportunity to reexamine information from different perspectives at multiple levels. This is usually done by making information available in diverse ways, such as online learning or technology, brochures, multiple exhibit points, interactives, et cetera, even using multisensory components when possible to accommodate different learning styles. The experience generally should allow visitor to go at their own pace and then return and engage how they wish. Repetition will hopefully lead to reflection. Reflection is allowing opportunity for questions and further consideration. This could be as simple as asking, "Do you have a question?" However, you have to prepare with clear staff training in order to quickly follow up in the moment. More importantly, I see this point as providing a physical and emotional space for visitors to process and reflect, dealing with whatever reactions and thoughts they may have. I encourage you to look up the Fountain Rains of the National Museum of African-American History and Culture in Washington, DC, as a point of inspiration for that point. Finally, reconsideration. Reconsideration offers guests to engage in deeper, more meaningful learning by providing opportunities to respond in some way. This is fostering space for them to share comments and ideas, but usually involves some type of social dialogue or action that is relevant to the difficult history you are trying to share. Simple examples of this process are questions such as, "How do you think this individual felt at the time? What do you think led to this? Or what do you think may be the outcome?" The five Rs often help museum staff with facilitating experiences and training dozens, but there are further key points for consideration. I think what is ideal is to lead with multidimensional and personal stories of historical figures where possible, being careful not to inadvertently injectify or generalize, but focus on their individuality and their humanity. With this in mind, how do we cast a vision, inspire the future, understanding that we are engaging in conversations about the past with living individuals that have their own diverse thoughts and beliefs? Wherever we begin in the conversation, it must start with content that is comprehensive and sound within historical research. In regards to tough history, it must be both deep and wide, providing context that is local, state, national, even arguably international in view. Many sites, including ours, sometimes stumble with this point by not fully analyzing primary resources, bias, and context, thereby only presenting an incomplete or, at worst, misleading interpretation. There is also the vital impact of race and identity awareness for both staff and guests. Communications a two-way street and self-awareness on the part of the interpreter helps to navigate learning opportunities. One of the challenges is recruiting staff and dozens with this understanding and the consistent struggle of this value. Hard work starts with yourself. How museums train their staff and dozens is a vital part of the commitment to difficult history and how the guest's expectations will align with their experiences. Our nation's pervasive myths about the history of slavery, just as an example, and the understanding and understanding the sensitivities when addressing this material for both the docent and visitor means that we can just no longer provide a summarized tour manual and then blindly trust. 2020 taught us more than anything that people are craving for museums and authenticity and an honest willingness to participate with questions and dialogue. It is nuanced work that potentially asks a guest, or even a docent, staff member, to grapple with new historical viewpoints, which can lead to potential cognitive dissonance. Advocate that there must be institutional investment from the top to the bottom and vice versa. The museum's core stakeholders, from board to volunteers, must be involved and support the work. The hard conversations must be held at the high level for strategic decision-making and say the tone for how staff approaches development engages success. Just as important is community involvement in response. The interpretation of difficult topics often can connect and even open the door to new partners that find value in the perspectives and stories of sidelined history. These community stakeholders, which, keep in mind, sometimes they are people descendants of both enslaved and slave owners from the past. These are local businesses, these are nonprofits, social groups, and universities. They all should be actively involved in helping to shape the narrative and offering support. I firmly believe that history is not static, but is the work of each generation to wrestle and do the hard work, define meaning that personally in for their community. The pictures that you see on the screen exemplify this point. Roswell's commitment to stories such as Doc's Cafe, McHenry Brown, the Grove Way Community, and recognizing the Trail of Tears within Riverside Park are steps within this process. The concept of historic assets in Roswell must evolve and grow to remain relevant. We are taking steady action towards progress in response to these challenges. The Historic Assets team have recently modified the staffing structure to better facilitate and streamline training, communication, and operations, all in anticipation for growth across multiple sites. The conversation regarding historic assets is expanding to inclusion of Mimoso Hall, Doc's Cafe and its renovation and development, cemetery preservation interpretation, the Old Mill at Vicry Creek, among other touchpoints. We will also renew a commitment to research, valuation, and training so that first and foremost, we ensure a holistic and unified expression of Roswell's past, that we may serve as a resource and a help to community heritage partners. I also envision a robust volunteer program and outreach that is a model for the profession and an integral part of our community's opportunities. This program reaches the citizens of all age, utilizing thoughtful development and opportunities to invest in their lives, while also building the human engagement necessary for interpretation and dialogue. The preservation of Roswell historic landscape remains a longstanding part of city mission and vision because it is such an organ, part of our city's identity, resources and landscapes that other cities only try to emulate. In conclusion, I would like to point out that over the years, museums have shifted from being repositories of encased artifacts on the intellectual pedestal, so to speak. Instead, they are changing focus to the purposeful, curated, personal experience of the individual visitor and the meaning that they can take away. This personalization can be as subtle as the environment created in the physical structure of the museum or site itself. I remember hearing during my studies that said that the high majority of people trust the history. They learn at historic sites and museums more so than what they learn in the classroom or in a book. This tells you much about the power of environment and interpretation. Clearly, people look to museums to make sense of what they are seeing around them in their world. And I think we all agree that this past year, we have been living through some living history right now, and continue to do so. Roswell is in such a position to speak to these challenges. It is why I accepted this job and why I am so excited to support these assets in our community. I'm grateful for your trust for that. I would like to thank the mayor for spearheading this conversation, and I thank you, council, for this opportunity. It is vital work to what I see as illuminating the past and inspiring the future. Roswell Historic Assets plays a significant role in this vision. So thank you very much, and I'll be happy to take questions at this time.
Council, have any questions? Councilmember Palermo.
So thank you, Mayor Henry. So actually, not a question, just a comment. So definitely appreciate the mayor's efforts in pulling this group together. And Dina, you know, you just gave a great presentation that I think shows a lot of hard work from you and our community members. So again, just really thank you for all this thought you're putting in. And it's definitely an important challenge that we need to work together on. So again, Dina, great, great job.
Thank you.
Additional comments, questions from council? Okay, now I believe that we've got Elaine De Niro to present her portion, and I think you'll find it equally captivating. Thank you for being with us, Elaine.
You're welcome. Okay, well, I thank you for giving me this opportunity to present this program this evening. I was asked to give a brief history of the area in regard to its diversity, highlighting the rich early heritage of African-Americans. It's an ongoing process to document all the various groups and the demographic trends. And we always step back, evaluate, and go forward and make sure that we are doing things correctly. The material in this presentation is from the Roswell Historical Society, City of Roswell Research Library and Archives. Okay. All right, long before the Cherokee inhabited this area, indigenous people were present. There is evidence of repeated prehistoric occupation of the area that extended over a period of 9,000 to 10,000 years. According to an archaeological study done on the area of the Riverside Road Pump Station, ancient tribes left behind artifacts from the archaic period dating from 3,000 B.C. There is evidence of an early Mississippian culture on the banks of the Chattahoochee River near Dawn White Park, including a mound used for ceremonial purposes. This pottery shard from the Mississippian period was found on private property near Holcomb Bridge Road. Before the middle of the 16th century, the Creek Indians controlled almost all of present-day Georgia. At that time, the Cherokees began to pressure them to move further inland. A battle occurred in Lumpkin County in the 1600s, and after this battle, the Creeks retreated to a line roughly south of the Edoa River. And then a later battle in North Georgia forced the Creeks south of Chattahoochee and Flint Rivers, and west to the Coussa River. Hence the term Upper Creek and Lower Creek. With the Creeks' removal, the Cherokee Nation extended to the Chattahoochee River in the Roswell area. And the little red square right there is showing you where Roswell is located. Most of the Cherokees lived in North Georgia near their capital of New Ashota. There were few Cherokee families in this area. Zeke Proctor was the son of William Proctor, who lived between the forks of Folk Killer and Vicry Creeks. He was a seven-year-old when his family was forcefully removed from the area in 1838. He would later become a hero in Oklahoma for his personal war against the white men. John Doris and his Cherokee wife, Nancy Cook, lived in the Grab Apple area in the 1830s and ran a general store. The Downing family lived near the area of the Wellstar North Fulton Hospital. See the left over here, you'll see Four Killer Old Settlement on a contemporary map, and it's actually listed on an 1832 map. In 1832, the state of Georgia mapped the Cherokee lands that they considered in their borders, held a land lottery, making way for white settlers to move in the area. A treaty was signed in 1835, giving land west of the Mississippi River to the Cherokees and claiming their land for the United States. This is a land grant for the land in Roswell just south of Barrington Hall. You'll see it's landlot 382, and Barrington Hall is on 383. The grants were 40 acres in this area and were considered gold lots. In 1838, the United States forcefully removed the Cherokees in what became known as a Trail of Tears. Roswell King from Darien, Georgia, during this period, passed through the area on his way to Delonaga to open a branch of the Darien Bank. He was aware of the source of water power on Vicry Creek. He began purchasing land in the area as early as 1835 to build a textile mill and establish the town of Roswell. He invited family members and friends to invest in the mill and build homes in the area that it was considered a healthier climate than the coast. Mill workers came to the area for an opportunity to work in the mills, mostly from the Carolinas. They were primarily Scotch-Irish descent. Farmers came in search of new farmland. This is a land deed that dates to 1837 for land owned by the Hembree family. The enslaved were brought to the area by the founding families of the from the coast. And according to the 1848 Georgia Tax Digest for Cobb County, which we were in Cobb County at that time, Barrington King had fifty-six slaves, the Roswell Manufacturing Company, ten, John Dunwoodie, thirty-one, Nathaniel Pratt, eleven, James Stevens Bullock, twenty-five, the estate of Baird Hand, the deceased husband of Eliza King Hand, four, and Archibald Smith, twenty-one. This is a slave schedule for Barrington King, showing the age and gender of his slaves, but not giving their names. In 1850, there were more than two hundred slaves in the area in the outlying agricultural area. This is a page in King's account ledger showing the names and ages of his slaves, also showing if they were sold or if they were sick. And on the bottom right hand, it actually noted the births of slaves and who their parents were. This is a very rare amber type photograph from the 1850s showing Barrington King's carriage in front of a store in Marietta and his slave Daddy Petra right here tending to his horses. And we know this because of all the extensive notes that were left by the King family. By 1840, the enslaved were members of area churches. The Roswell Presbyterian Church had twenty-five members, and on the left you'll see a total abstinence pledge that they were to refrain from spirits of any kind. And the the slaves signed this that were members, but they were always listed just by their first names with and then the owner. The Lebanon Baptist Church had thirty-five by letter, thirty-two members by request, and thirty-four by experience. This is a page of a ledger from the minutes of the Lebanon Baptist Church from 1839, 1841. In 1855, the enslaved were given land to establish their own place of worship, Pleasant Hill Baptist Church. It also included burial lands for their deceased. It was located near the corner of Holcomb Bridge and Alpharetta Highway. The enslaved were also buried in the Lebanon Baptist Church Cemetery and Founder Cemetery in unmarked graves. During the Civil War, many of the families refugied from the area and took their slaves with them. Barrington King took some to Savannah and also sent some to Macon. Many of the African Americans fled the area during and after the war. After the war, very few of the original African Americans remained in the area. Nine African American men from the Roswell District took the oath of allegiance to the United States, and this is an official copy of an official document. You'll see that William Jackson, and it says right here, his mark. So whoever filled this out, filled out his name, and then had him make an X. This is a summary of what the African American population was in 1870 through 1930. So you see that there was thirty-six, one sixty-eight, ninety-five, and then it was always under two hundred. Zion Baptist Church was organized in 1871 with members from the original Pleasant Hill Baptist Church. Its congregation built a church on Zion Circle. The original church burned in 1885 and was rebuilt. In 1964, a new structure was completed on the site and is still there. It was about 1900 that the Pleasant Hill Baptist Church congregation would move closer to Roswell also, meeting in a building owned by small members of the of a Methodist church. And then in 1922, Merrill Knuckles purchased a land where the current building is located on Pleasant Hill. The African Americans began to establish their own neighborhoods after the war. Parthenia Cook purchased land on Oxbow Road in 1886 from the Roswell Manufacturing Company. I think this is really kind of special for a black woman to purchase land. This is a photo of William and Zabit Jackson. William was the one that we saw signing the oath. They also lived on Oxbow Road. For generations, life was experienced in multigenerational households on the streets and front porches of this tight-knit community. The neighborhoods included Pleasant Hill Street, Bush Street, Grove Way, Zion Circle, Oxbow, and Webb Street. In 1912, Forsyth County began to purge their black population when a murder of a young girl led to mob lynchings. And this is documented in the book Blood at the Root. Race riots broke out in both Forsyth County and Dawson. And when riots erupted and young blacks were killed, African Americans fled these counties. Webb Street became a refuge for those who moved into the area. By 1920, there were no blacks listed on the census records in Forsyth County. Esther Knuckles Washington tells the story of her family. She came and spoke to the Roswell Historical Society. My dad told me that my grandfather decided to move his family to this area from Coming when he discovered that young men were being slain. And grandfather, because he had a lot of sons, thought it would be safer for them if they moved them out of the area, and so they moved south. Roswell black population was segregated at this time. The First School for Blacks Children was located on Pleasant Hill Street in the 1920s. In 1934, Fulton County built a school on Grove Way. The land belonged to Aaron Grogan, an African American. And this was the, there's a photo of the of the school. In 1949, the Alpharetta Colored School was built on Kimball Bridge Road for black students from Alpharetta, Roswell, and Sheltonville. And then it was renamed Bailey Johnson in 1954, and this is their first graduating class. And so the school on Grove Way was no longer in use. Jim Crow laws were state and local laws that mandated separate but equal status for African Americans. These laws did not deter the black residents in Roswell from developing separate organizations and clubs that served the betterment of their community and gave them a sense of pride. Grove Way Community Group was a neighborhood organization established in 1943 and was responsible for helping and promoting the black community in Roswell. It held social functions, helped to get blacks out to vote, and worked with city officials to promote racial harmony. It was incorporated in 1961. After the school for the area of black students was constructed in Alpharetta, of course, the former school was no longer in use. It was purchased back from Fulton County and was donated to the black community as part of the Boys Club of Atlanta from 1951 to 1960. The building was the heart of the community and served as a meeting place for many organizations. The building would eventually become the home of the Grove Way Community Group and the North Fulton Child Development Association. It was then taken down in 1970s, and the current building that's on the property is is there. Black members of the Masons and foreign and veterans of foreign wars met in the community building. Alex Knuckles organized the first black Boy Scout troop in Roswell, Troop Number 206. Their meetings and also teen dances were held in the community building. A local black baseball team from the Josh Gibson League was named the Roswell Flames, later known as the Southern Flames. Games were held on the baseball field on Woodstock Road. You see the water tower in the background. Fundraisers were held to pay for the players' uniforms and equipment. Women on the community sold food at concession stands. You can see that right here on the right. During the games to provide financial support for the team, everyone came to the park after church to watch the games, which were held on Sunday. Doc's Place was the only restaurant in town that blacks were allowed to patronize. Most blacks during this period worked according to census data as domestic help, day laborers, mechanics, farm laborers, washwomen, carpenters, and chauffeurs. Jane Hill worked at Barrington Hall. Sam Delaney worked at the Shell Gas Station that was located at the corner of Canton and Norcross Street. The Ku Klux Klan had a presence in Roswell with local members. The the members would ride through the Grove Way community, shooting shotguns. A resident of the area recalled that she was told by her father to get on the floor when the Klan rode through the neighborhood. They burned Grove Way Building in 1961, but it was rebuilt. Moving beyond segregation, Roswell began to slowly make progress towards equality. Roswell employed its first African American police officer, Coleman Maxwell, and it's elected its first African American councilperson, James Smith. Roswell remained a very small southern town through the 1970s with little diversity in population. If you see that according to the census records on there, you'll see that there's little growth in population from the 1870s until you hit around this period of 1980s and 1990s. And we have this U.S. Census records for 1970. The African American population was three forty-five. In 1880, it was four fifty. Major changes would come about in the 1980s. If you look on the list on the side, there was the growth of the suburbs. There was annexation by the city of Roswell of land. There was opening of the highway of four hundred. Incorporations started to move to the Atlanta area. An influx of northerners would begin to change the dynamics of the area, and black families moved into the area, bought homes in Martin's Landing and other subdivisions. The Hispanic population would grow in the 1980s due to construction opportunities. They mainly lived in the Fraser Street Apartments, which no longer is there. It's the city apartments now. They were able to access mass transit from this area, and also the North Fulton Child Development Association, as it was known at this time, provided a source of affordable childcare. The Asian population has also increased, but at a much lower percentage. I spoke with Professor Pastor Kim this week, and he said most of his congregation, although the church is located in Roswell, they the his members come from all over the the North Fulton area. This is the population in Roswell for the 1990s. You see the Hispanic is only two percent. And then when we get to 2000, in 2010, we have a really rapid increase of population in all areas. And you'll see by 2010, the Hispanic or Latino population is greater than the black or African American. It's also a little deceiving because this is a separate category, and Hispanics can either identify as white or black when it comes to race. That brings us up to to now. This is a United States Census Bureau estimate for the populations for Roswell for 2019. And the story continues. And the Roswell Historical Society is committed to gathering more data for its collections, and we just appreciate, and we thank you for your time.
Thank you so much, Elaine. Great presentation. Also, thanks to Dina. You all did some great work on that. Like I said, we've got a lot of folks out in the community that really want to see and absorb this information. I think that it's good to know where we came from and how we've evolved, and that we're, we are working very hard to tell the entire history of the city of Roswell. Does council have any comments or questions? Yes, Councilmember Zapata.
Thank you, Mayor Henry. Thank you, Elaine, for the presentation. Very nice, very informative, very important. And I just want to add to your presentation that I was elected the first Hispanic elected official in the city of Roswell. So just want to maybe add to your presentation in the future. I just want to give you this little tip of information. And I'm very proud of representing Hispanic community and be the first one elected Roswell City Council. Thank you.
Thank you for that information. I will definitely make a note of that and will be in my next presentation.
Councilmember Judy.
Amazing presentation, Elaine. Saw lots of names that I recognized from growing up here in Roswell that still have descendants living here that are working in our city, in our parks and and living here among us. And I think it's important as we continue down the track to to bring them in and have them tell stories of their families and and get that on record as as I know you all are doing. So it's really, really cool to see those pictures and some names that I definitely recognize. So, thank you so much.
We did start a, we started a video program. Charles Grogan, who is grew up in the city of Roswell, and I call him the black historian. He's just amazing. He started giving me a list, and we had Annie Strickland come in for this amazing videotaped interview. And then it was March 13th, and we have not been able to do it. But we have our list, and we definitely are going to work on it and do it. We'll figure out some way. Maybe we'll do Zoom meetings with them. But thank you for that comment.
Well, thank you again, Elaine and the Historical Society and Dina and Rick and Parks Department and Cultural Affairs. Like I said, you all did a great job. I know that the community is really going to enjoy this presentation. So let's give them a hand, please.
Thank you.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is the discussion and consideration of the criteria for qualification for Roswell Business Relief Funds and the Roswell Residential Relief Funds and implementation to administer the $800,000 in COVID relief grants. I provided you all through email a suggested criteria for both. I wanted to let you know first, I think this will be probably the easiest one. The residential program, I'm proposing that it be administered by North Fulton Community Charities. They're administering the one in Alpharetta, as well as, I believe, Johns Creek and Sandy Springs. So I gave you a sample MOU that we could sign with them. They are in the business of doing this. They they know exactly what they're doing and how to how to go about doing it. I had a great conversation with Holly York. So if if we could talk about this in two phases, I would like to suggest that we use North Fulton Community Charities. We would give them the stipulation. We would give them the stipulation that if someone needed rent or mortgage relief or utility relief, that they be Roswell residents. And of course, then what community charities does, just so you all know, is they never give money to individuals. What they do is they pay their bills. So if you were to go into North Fulton Community Charities and say you're six months behind in your rent, they would actually write the rent check to your landlord. They would not write it to you. The same thing with the utilities. In my conversation with Holly York, she feels as though their food bank is prospering. They have a lot of donations. They can handle that on their own with anybody from Roswell that's coming in asking for food. So this would be purely for mortgage, rent, and utility relief for Roswell residents. So I would like to open that up for your consideration. Do you have any questions, comments? Councilmember Plaramo.
Thank you, Mayor Henry. So for clarification, as I was trying to look through the MOU, so there is a way for any of this relief to ensure it is a Roswell resident that's receiving it. I think that's what I'm hearing there. And then also regarding that, I just, just help me understand the kind of visibility that we have. I guess what my question is, is it that? I guess, I guess, help me understand the qualifications for how someone goes to the North Fulton Community Charities and shows that they need, you know, they need one of these grants. I guess, just help me understand what that looks like.
Well, it would be directly related to COVID-19, whether it's job loss or inability to pay their rent, inability to provide childcare because they've lost their jobs, those sorts of things. North Fulton Community Charities verifies their address being in Roswell because their utility bills would have their address. Their rent would have their address, as would a mortgage. And what these folks would need to do is demonstrate to them that they've been adversely affected by COVID-19. And as I said before, they're the experts at this. They do a great job. They know all the right questions to ask and how to screen folks. So and it was interesting because Holly York did tell me a number of stories, you know, with folks that aren't on the up and up with some of this stuff. And North Fulton Charities is very, very good at leading through that. Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, Mayor Henry. Just on the residential side, while we're still talking about this, would there be some limits as to the maximum amount per family, per household? How is it, any sizing? And can they come back for more than one if their fund's still available? Any thoughts or comments on that piece?
And I'm looking through the information that North Fulton Community Charities gave us. And I think that those are great points. We can put that in place. We can limit it. We can also limit the number of times that they can come to us for it. We can also actually limit it to, and we can limit it to, you know, if they've received funds from another source and then coming to us for that as well. So we can control all of that. And I can get more specific information from North Fulton Community Charities on that.
Thank you.
Councilmember Zapata.
Thank you, Mayor Henry. Thank you for sharing your criteria with us through the email. I believe that given the importance and sensitivity, you know, this giving away taxpayers' money, I believe that the process, the process of allocation and administration of this program have to be done at City Hall for accountability, transparency, openness to residents and taxpayers. And I believe that we even have to keep a record of who received how much money to pay what kind of bills, if it's mortgage, rent, or utility, gas, or power. So I believe that outsourcing, I don't believe is the best way, given, again, the sensibility and importance of giving away taxpayers' money.
Well, I would like to clarify that we can, we will stipulate all of that with North Fulton Charities, and they would provide that documentation to us as they go through the process. And we would be given that on a regular basis, a regular accounting of who received the money, when they received the money, where the money went. And so we know exactly what's going on on an ongoing basis. Councilmember Plaramo.
Hey, Mayor Henry, so I have two questions. So one is a follow-up, and this question might be more for Mr. Davidson, but related to your answer, Mayor Henry. So basically, and I do see in the accountability section, it mentions, you know, the full auditability and records retention. And so I guess just my question is, so Mayor Henry, as you proposed and stated, that if we go down this path, then there would be frequent updates to the city on just making sure every penny is accounted for. Is that something that's an open record? Given, just to ensure that taxpayers can feel confident that their money is being used for those in need and being used properly? So again, I don't know if that's a question for Mr. Davidson or the mayor.
So it would be an open record. Obviously, there would be some things that are not subject to disclosure, so they would be redacted. But the actual where the money went, how it was spent and stuff, and such would be an open record.
Okay, thank you. And so that was my first question. Then my second question is, so the proposal is for $400,000. And so, you know, in reality, unfortunately, there's probably, or there's likely a greater need than $400,000. But if the need and the residence that requested is less than $400,000, how does that situation work? Is that something where the taxpayers get that money back? Or what does that look like? Again, I don't, you know, I see it likely that it's a non-issue, but I just want to make sure we dot all our i's and cross all our t's.
So under the federal guidelines, the money is required to be spent from March 1st, 2020 through December 31st of 2021. So it would go through the end of this year. If at that time there is money left over, that money can be allocated back to the city for any necessary expenditures the city had that we didn't account for in our budget from last year to cover those expenses. And if we don't have any expenses, the money is returned to the federal government. Right, but if we have extra money, then it would be in terms of the federal government. But we've already expended the money, so this is reimbursement money. So it would come back to the city.
The other thing we could always consider, well, no, it would come back to us. And when I had a conversation with Mr. Luckett about dividing this up, he thought that the $400,000 for businesses would probably be pretty close to what would be required to provide relief. So, but we're not certain. You know, we're not, Holly York didn't seem to think that we would end up with extra money. But, and that's sad. But I think that, you know, that's something great to consider, but no, it would connect with. Okay, so I've got a couple of questions. And what I would like to, I'll take a vote at the end on the residential and then separately on the business end. But Councilmember Hall, I think you had some great points. The maximum number, the maximum dollars per family, if we want to set the limit on that, as well as the number of times that they can apply and how that relates to other programs as well. Was there anything I missed? Yes, Councilmember Wilson.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just have a question or a clarification. If this city of Roswell-specific grant money, if there is a special, I guess, call for applications to Roswell residents? Or is it something that is just dispersed as Roswell residents come to North Fulton Community Charities looking for assistance?
I feel quite strongly we need to do a press release from the city because a lot of folks, especially folks that are new to this, and it's sad, but North Fulton Charities is seeing a new clientele, so to speak. And I know that many of these folks don't know where to go. You know, they know to reach out to their church. They're not certain where to go. And then, of course, you know, there are some folks that are embarrassed, and they see it as a stigma, which I think that the more information we can get out to folks and let them know it's available, and it's available through North Fulton Charities, I think would be a great service to our community.
Yes, I agree. Whatever we can do to raise awareness of the availability of these funds in the community. And I would agree that North Fulton Community Charities has done an incredible job in responding to the crisis and think that they'll do a great job executing this program for us.
Thank you. Councilmember Judy.
Thank you, Mayor. So tonight, would we be voting on having North Fulton Community Charities administer this and then vote on the MOU with the added answers for the questions that Councilmember Hall brought to get this moving? How would the mechanics work on this vote?
What we could do, just to make it go a little more smoothly and timely, what we can do is for you to give me the authority, but for you all to sign off on it. So that way I can work on the agreement, the MOU with North Fulton Charities. But before I sign off on that, I would give you all that information individually and see if you agree with that. And then, of course, the other thing too is, at a future meeting, I would propose to bring all of this back to make it a part of the public record on how we're administering both programs. But I am trying to get this done quickly because we've got a lot of folks in need out there, and they need this help now, not in two weeks or four weeks. So I think that might be a possibility.
Thank you.
Councilmember Plaramo.
Thank you, Mayor Henry. And you said something that sparked something for me as well, just mentioning, you know, just those that are in most need. And knowing that I have the theory that this $400,000 would certainly be fully used and expecting realistically that there's probably more need than that. I guess, I guess my question or my concern is someone that is already in this situation, they have, you know, their unpaid utility bill, for example, and they're already in this situation before the council's even made a decision to go in this direction. To me, that seems, that would be an individual that I want to make sure that we're prioritizing or something along those lines versus after this press release goes out and someone who has been up to date with, say, their rent, their mortgage, whatever it might be, and then knowing this comes out. I guess a concern I'd have is if this is going to be paying for anybody between now and the end of the year that misses a payment versus knowing that I think there's a very strong potential that even as of today, February 8th, there's probably, you know, many residents within Roswell that are in this situation. I would just want to see if there's some way that we could focus it on kind of just the prior to this press release, prior to this vote, something along those lines, knowing that I think there's the potential that all of those in need don't end up getting it that are already in those dire situations, if that makes sense.
Yeah, no, I think that makes a lot of sense. And I can talk with North Fulton Charities again regarding that because they know who their customers are, and they'll be able to give us a very, very good idea of what they've got sitting on the books right now. So I can put that as part of the MOU as well. Councilmembers Zapata.
Thank you, Mayor. So, you know, here the word customers. So what is going to guarantee that customers won't have the priority to get until? Because I'm sure this will be a first apply, first serve. So what is going to guarantee that other than current customers of North Fulton Charity, we have this equal access to help from the city of Roswell taxpayers? So that is a concern. We talk about advertising. We talk about, not everybody has a, not everybody's a customer of North Fulton. Actually, there's customers all over North Fulton, you know, Alpharetta, Milton, Johns Creek. So my concern here is what kind of guarantee will we have that won't have the first option, the customers, called customers of North Fulton Charity versus giving the chance to everybody who will apply, will be online, you know, as first apply, first serve? So that is my first concern. My second concern is if we don't come with quantitative criteria of how to allocate these up to, I don't know, $1,000, whatever is decided for a household, then you know, you get into subjectivity. So we need to come with quantitative criteria that North Fulton Charity understands very well how to allocate the Roswell taxpayers' money to people in need. So I will be able to support if, again, you know, we can guarantee that everybody have access, nobody has a priority, and we have a quantitative criteria in place before anything, before giving up taxpayers' money.
And I think that all of that is very doable. You know, our outreach will go out to the churches and other folks in our community, our nonprofits, and we'll negotiate the MOU with North Fulton Charities. So they will be required to do exactly what we tell them to do. And a lot of this is our outreach in the community as well. So that would be my suggestion, is adding that into the MOU. And if you all are comfortable with it, then we can sign off on it and put it in the public record. Councilmembers Zapata.
Thank you, Mayor. My other question is, have you evaluated what it's going to take to do at City Hall? These payments of taxpayers' money to Roswell residents? What is going to take and how could be done? Have you ever evaluated this option as well?
Our staff at City Hall is not comfortable administering this program. That is why we're suggesting that it go through North Fulton Community Charities. So the money would go to North Fulton Community Charities. They account for everything they give out, give us that accounting. So it would not be administered at City Hall. Did I just answer your question?
Yeah, I think so. You know, so, yeah, I mean, the need has been for, you know, at least four months. So if we take a week or so more to come with the right thing, it's not an issue because helps, you know, we proposed back in September also some sort of help for businesses. So, you know, helps was needed, you know, four, five months ago, and some other surrounding city already implemented this. So I think if we take a week or so more just to get it right, it's not an issue.
That's what I'm proposing. That's why I'm bringing it to you today and asking you to allow me to negotiate based on our conversations today with North Fulton Charities. That's my intention. So we have a council meeting in two weeks. So if you all can agree on the MOU with North Fulton Charities, it can be executed. That's what I'm saying. I would like you all to sign off on this. I'm not asking you to trust me. Additional comments or questions on this? Okay. Now I'd like to go to the business portion, and that is $400,000 for businesses. I've got Mr. Fisher and Mr. Luckett, I believe, that can be willing to talk about this. But I gave you copies of what the other cities are doing, their criteria. I gave you a list of suggested criteria for our business through the city. And so I wanted to get your thoughts to see on the suggested criteria, if you have suggestions there. If there's one city that you like the way they've handled this more than another one, I'd appreciate that. And then we can go about this in the same way. Councilmember Willsey.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and thank you for bringing this forward and also giving us the examples from the other cities. I thought that what you outlined was very good. What I, the city that really could have struck me as having a lot of detail and was a little bit more specific about how the funds were being used with Sandy Springs. A couple of things, I thought that the funding tiers that were set up, I think would be very helpful in giving businesses some idea of what to expect. And it would also help our review committee to know, you know, exactly how they could go about assigning funds. Because I have a feeling that $400,000 is going to go pretty quickly. So, you know, if we could set these parameters to make the review process a little easier for them, I think that would be very helpful. I also thought that the eligible uses that were listed by Sandy Springs are also very good. You know, a lot of businesses are hurting in a lot of different ways. Not only with delinquent payments and leases and things like that. But I think the other word that we heard a lot is pivoting their businesses and reinventing. So I think that where there were situations where businesses were able to, you know, purchase machinery or equipment, or kind of readjust their workforce or something, and able to continue business operations during the pandemic, that those expenses should be eligible as well. And I really liked the way that it was highlighted, so that I think it gave businesses a little more clarity in what they could apply for. So those are my comments.
Thank you. Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, Mayor Henry. And I think we are going to probably have more discussion on the businesses, because there's so many factors to consider. And one of the ones that I wanted to talk about are, we're, I mean, we did start talking about this late in September, and here we're approaching March. And I just wonder if we can look at this a little bit differently. There are businesses, many of them that got federal funding through PPP or EIDL or some of these programs. And also, there is a second round of funding available to those businesses. However, there's a lot of businesses that have fallen through the cracks. And they were in that category that perhaps, you know, didn't qualify for various reasons. Perhaps because of the way they have their tax structure done, and they couldn't meet the criteria to get the funds or get enough funds. And I just wonder if we can have a conversation about that and how to be more targeted. Also, Harpreet just gave a presentation. And we're seeing this also, is many businesses are actually at or above pre-COVID levels in a lot of the industries. But there are certain industries that are really hurting. I mean, and you could see that from her graph, that they just haven't recovered and aren't going to recover. So I would just, I'm throwing these out there for my colleagues, council members, to also share in discussion as we consider how we want to do this program.
Thank you. Councilmember Clarimo.
Thank you, Mayor Henry. So I'd like to address some things within the suggestions that I think makes sense and actually really make really good sense. And some things that give me some large concerns. As well as addressing, I agree with Councilmember Willsey, that I really liked the way that Sandy Springs did some aspects. So first off, Sandy Springs, they had a list of disqualified businesses. And I think that was really smart, and I agree with their list. And I think that we absolutely should just really copy and paste that Sandy Springs list. I also agree with Councilmember Willsey, I liked how Sandy Springs gives ranges or different brackets, however you want to describe it, and done quantitatively. So just very clear, here's how much you qualify for. So those are aspects I like, and I think really make a lot of sense if we're going to do this. And with the possible slash suggested criteria in the email, some additional things that I certainly support, you know, the staffing of 100 people or less. I'm certainly good with that. All city obligations paid current, I think that makes a lot of sense. Primary owner slash operator only, that makes sense to me. And then, so those are aspects that I think make a lot of sense. Now here's where my major concern is that I hope we can address. Is first off, I really like what Councilmember Hall brought up. I think it makes a lot of sense that, you know, we had so many Roswell businesses that received such large amount of federal funding, et cetera, that we really should have a focus on those that slipped through the cracks. Because again, there's limited money. You know, $400,000 is a lot of taxpayer money, it is. But when we have this many, when we have so many businesses, you know, the way it gets spread out, it ends up really being, you know, enough where we obviously have limited resources. And so we've got to really target it. And so I first off, think we really should be targeting towards those businesses that slipped through the cracks and have not received that federal funding. So that's one thing that I think is important. Also, something that I think is really important is it needs to be quantitative. So I have a real concern when there's a review committee and qualification team, and you're starting to get subjective type possibilities. That's something that greatly concerns me, because if taxpayer money is going to be really reallocated to different businesses and paid out to different businesses, it should be some quantitative guidelines that we agreed to ahead of time, and there should be no area of subjectivity. So that's where I strongly believe it shouldn't be a review committee of appointees deciding. I strongly believe it should be something that through an open records request or anybody else could see, oh, that makes perfect sense. Those are the businesses that met the exact quantitative, you know, requirements. And I've got, as I was thinking about it this weekend, I drafted some possibilities on how we could look at that. I'm, of course, you know, open and would love to hear other ideas. But again, what's absolutely crucial to me is that this is done quantitatively. So there's no businesses or residents that aren't receiving money could make an argument that there was special treatment or there was any subjectivity applied. So those are my different thoughts that I'd like to discuss today.
Thank you. Councilmember Judy.
Thank you, Mayor. So I know we discussed in one of the last few meetings what Brookhaven did with restaurants per se, and their alcohol licenses, reimbursing their alcohol license. If you look at Sandy Springs, it says copy of current business license. I'm wondering if simplifying this for our businesses that are in need to pay for licenses, their business license, or their alcohol license, or different fees that the city charges, is an easier way to go through this to provide relief more evenly across the board? Just a thought. I don't know. I just, you know, when, I really, for some reason, gravitated toward that. I know every business is not a restaurant. I also agree with trying to find, and I don't know how to calculate that, the most businesses in need. And I think we can overcomplicate this where we have paralysis and we don't help anybody. So that's not my goal this evening. I want to make sure we do something and do it the easiest way possible. And I think from staff, might be able to tell us what that would be and what we could do across the board. Because looking at some of those Sandy Springs, I agree Sandy Springs seems to have a great system there. But some of those might disqualify some businesses that are really in need. So that's my two cents this evening.
Thank you. I would like to, I've got a question. Number one, the businesses fell through the cracks. Who are they? I don't know who they are. You could tell me five businesses right now, and I have no earthly idea if they fell through the cracks or not. And I don't know how we determine that. But also, I agree with Councilmember Clarimo, the quantitative aspect. And what is it exactly that we're looking at? And I also agree with Councilmember Judy, that we need to keep this fairly simple. One of the conversations I had with Mr. Luckett is the fact that, because as you know, when I was initially looking at this, I was looking at forgiving liquor licenses or, you know, various things. But the issue, what I'd rather do is be in a position to provide money to our businesses if they need that, to pay a liquor license. Or if they need that, they can determine how, what their needs are with that money, not us dictating it, you have to use it for a liquor license. So that's kind of where we were going with it. Councilmember Clarimo.
Excellent. Great conversation and a lot of things that I'm agreeing with in the sense I think everyone's making some great points. So a couple responses and kind of just some of my thoughts to hopefully continue the discussion. Is first off, of, you're right, I think none of us know or can name off the top of our head an individual company that slipped through the cracks. But I think the way to do that is just a clear, objective question or whatever it might be, is did they receive PPP loans or EIDL grants? And if the answer is no, then that's a company I'd say slipped through the cracks. So that's one thing to look at. But also just some examples of how do we get some quantitative aspects? And absolutely, again, though, need to make it simple, simple enough that we don't get the decision paralysis. So here's things I was thinking of, just really throwing it out there. I'm not in any way married to the numbers, but wanted to just show my thought process, which is showing decreased revenue from 2020 versus 2019. And so, for example, hypothetically, perhaps, in reality, I'd be curious to hear from Mr. Luckett on recommendations. But just to get something out there, you know, hypothetically, to qualify, you need to have had at least a 25% reduction from your 2020 revenue compared to 2019. Another way to do it is, you could just do, we could just say, everybody apply, and whoever have the biggest percentages in just ranking, that's how we decide to do it. So it's not first come, first served, as much as it's in a small amount of period. Whoever were impacted, the greatest amount are going to be those that get one of these grants. So that's one aspect. Another aspect I was looking at, because again, I think we need multiple quantitative qualifiers just to make sure that we do, you know, have the right target focus. So as an example, again, not married to the number, but looking at what was the 2020 revenue? And basically, for example, having this be focused on those businesses that made less than $1 million in 2020. And again, that's where I'd look to Mr. Luckett on what that right number is. But it's just, I was looking at what are some quantitative ways that we can ensure we're really helping those that most need it? Another possibility is just looking at, or to factor in, if we include decreased revenue, we include, you know, a maximum revenue. And another potential could be looking at profit margin. You know, we're talking example about restaurants and concerned with some of them. And my guess would be, some of them are, well, in reality, I think the strong majority absolutely really struggling. But to the points earlier, you know, some businesses are recovering better than other businesses. It's just an opportunity, looking at profit margin on who are the ones that don't really have that extra margin for the, you know, as cushion. But again, none of these, you know, what's not crucial to me is which metrics do we use? And what are the thresholds for the metrics? What's crucial to me is it's quantitative, and it's something that any taxpayer through an ORR could see, oh, that makes perfect sense on why that one shows versus any subjectivity.
Thank you. Mr. Davidson, could you clarify for us?
So some of the regulations from the Treasury Department state that you can't grant that money in order for them to pay you money back. So like a license, an alcohol license, you can't give them money to buy their alcohol license from the city. It'd be like property tax, giving somebody property tax money to pay the city property taxes. It's not allowed under the CARES Act. It has to be for expenses that were caused by COVID, which could be the business interruption cost. You know, they were shut down for a certain amount of time. They had to make adjustments on shutting certain, you know, tables down, their social distancing requirements. There's extra sanitizing requirements. These are all costs that are absolutely, should be, could be reimbursed to the businesses. But not for something where they're going to pay the city something. If the city wants to lower the, temporarily lower the license fees for alcohol licenses, they can do that, but it wouldn't be part of this grant program.
Councilmembers of Pata.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, you know, I have here a list, and I heard most of great ideas from my list here in terms of quantitative criteria. So I would like to summarize everything that I heard, but also some of them I have in my list as well. So number one, for those businesses who did not receive any federal financial assistance such as PPP or EIDL grants, maximum of 100 employees, up to date 2021 business license, low profitability, you know, profitability based on the 2021 all business type profitability table. Let's say for those businesses who has, on the table are 20% of less on profitability. Then with 2020 revenues less than, for example, a million dollar, those can apply, because definitely they are small businesses, and probably they have very little access or non-access to federal help. Then a decrease of 2020 revenues of 25% or more compared with 2019. Exclude home businesses and physical commercial locations in Roswell only. So I think that if we can all agree in this or any other additional quantitative criteria, then make it very simple. It's very simple. It's just checking the box. Do you have this, this, this? Okay, fine. Here is the system from the taxpayer of Roswell. So I don't know if I, we may have to consider another criteria. I'd be happy to write it down here.
Thank you. Councilmember Judy.
I guess this is for David. If this is a, we've already spent the CARES Fund money, and this is a reimbursement to the, to our general fund, then there shouldn't be any CARES Act limitations to the way we spend money for licenses. Is that correct or no?
So I would still go by the Treasury Department's guidance for use of the money, because this is still a reimbursement for money that we put out. But it is also the CARES Fund. So I would say that, look at the Treasury Department's regulations for the guidance. They specifically take into account grants to small businesses. The 100 people limit is good. Everything that y'all are talking about is good. But it also, in some other parts, say that the city or recipient shouldn't be giving grants in order to receive revenue from those grants. And their example is property taxes. So you don't want to give somebody money for property taxes, so they can pay you their property taxes. You know, other business expenses that went with the shutdown of their business, I'm sure.
Councilmember Tizer.
Thank you, Mayor. I've been listening carefully. Listening is, I think, an important skill. And here's what I'm thinking. I think the number one criteria might be eligible for PPP or EIDL, but did not receive any. A lot of businesses, you know, A lot of businesses, you know, missed, either missed an application timeframe or just, you know, didn't get there. But if we structure it around you are eligible, I think that helps with some of Mr. Davidson's concerns. And I think it also becomes very quantitative, because we know what those eligibility requirements were. I'm fine with the concept of less than 100 employees. I don't want to put too many other check the boxes on it, because we'll wind up without anybody. But if you wanted to say revenue less than whatever, a million dollars, that's fine with me. And no home-based business, I think, is probably fine, too. But I would keep it to that narrow group of requirements. And again, especially because if you were eligible, but you didn't get any, that pretty much tells you what you need to know. Thank you.
Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, Mayor Henry. Just a, Mr. Davidson, question or clarification? So these are grants, and will there be some requirements for the businesses to report back up to us in the form of reporting how they spent their grant at some period in time? And then I have a follow-up question to that.
So I think that should be made part of the grant program itself. Absolutely, that they are telling you what they're spending it on, or what they did spend it on.
Okay, thank you. And then to Councilmember Tyser's point of that they would be eligible for the CARES Fund, those that were eligible were able to get the funds in the sense of had program eligibility, but had a technicality that they couldn't. So we certainly could put criteria like that around it. But my suggestion would be, because of the grant aspect of it, that I'd like to see or consider our grant department to run this program. They probably wouldn't be happy to hear that, but with, because it's only 400,000, I don't think ultimately it's going to be that many. We're going to have objective criteria. They score things, and they could keep the list, though we would know who needs to report back up to us in three, four, or five months, whatever it is. I'm just putting that out there.
And let me say that I've thought about that as well. One of the things going into this is a commitment from Mr. Luckett that the finance department could handle this. He did not give any commitments on the grant department, but the finance department can handle it. So if the, to me, if our grant department can aid them in that, absolutely, they should. But Mr. Luckett couldn't make a commitment on that. But, you know, what I would suggest, again, because it sounds like we're all agreeing to everything, that we fine-tune this, I'll circulate it, so we're ready to go again. But all of these ideas are great. I'm not seeing any objections to anything. And then what I also need to do is circle back with staff to make sure some things that we suggested, they might have a better suggestion. So I'd like to just start formulating that document to get back to you all and get you all to sign off on it, and then hopefully we can start this program two weeks from today. Councilmembers Zapata.
Thank you, Mayor. Also, I forgot to mention that with the maximum of 100 employees, then this could be used to create a scale of how much money could be allocated. You know, a scale that we need to agree, if it's, you know, 1 to 5, 5 to 10, you know, 10 to 50, 50 to 100. So then depends on the scale is how much money maximum they can receive on a grant.
And I suggest you look at Sandy Springs. One employee up to 5,000, two to 10 employees up to 10,000, and 11 to 99 employees up to 15,000. That would be my suggestion. Okay. Any additional questions, comments? What I would like to do is go ahead and ask for two motions for me to proceed to negotiate an MOU and also with residential, and then also with staff to come up with a document on how we're internally going to administer the businesses. And I will make sure that we incorporate all the comments we received tonight. I'll get back to you with another document. And then, like I said, hopefully we'll be able to put that out in the public two weeks from today and be on the ground, ready to go. Councilmember Zapata.
Thank you, Mayor. So the MOU will come back with details about the quantitative criteria that would be approved. Okay.
Yes. Councilmember Judy.
I'll motion to put together the MOU for North Fulton Community Charities.
We've got a motion by Councilmember Judy. Councilmember Palermo, is that a second? No.
So clarifying question. So basically, is this motion that you're going to work on the MOU, get, you know, look at the feedback, et cetera, and then bring it back in two weeks for a vote?
I want to bring it back to you before two weeks, but for an official vote in two weeks.
Okay.
What I'd like everybody to do is be able to agree on both documents within the next week or so, so we can start to try to ramp up on this. Because I'll need to talk with North Fulton Community Charities. We'll also need to have conversations with staff. But I don't want to wait for two weeks to have qualified questions again. So I'd rather have it get as polished as we can in the meantime. And then we would have an official vote. It would be on the public record two weeks from today.
Makes sense. Thank you.
Councilmember Tyser.
Yeah.
We've got a motion by Councilmember Judy for the MOU with North Fulton Charities. We've got a second by Councilmember Tyser. All those in favor, please raise your hands. And it is unanimous. Thank you. Now, the next item will be our business administration. Yes, Councilmember Willsey.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I would like to make a motion to ask staff to come back with program guidelines for the business grant program as discussed today.
So are you saying that I have the authority to work on this with the city administrator?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, motion to the mayor. Yes.
Okay. So thank you, Councilmember Willsey. We have a motion. Do I have a second? Councilmember Tyser, is that a second? Councilmembers Zapata.
Thank you, Mayor. So the motion is for the mayor to go back to staff and run all these criteria was described today by the members of the council, and then come back again to council to vote on the final criteria of how to distribute grants?
Yes, that is the motion.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, and the authorization for me to work on it and get you all to sign off on it before two weeks from now. So we've got a motion by Councilmember Willsey. Did I have a second on that? Oh, Councilmember Tyser, a second. All those in favor, please raise your hands. And it passes unanimously. Thank you all very much. I think that this will be a fairly smooth process the way we're working on this. Thank you for your input. I needed to get the ball rolling to see where you were on this. And I think that I've got the guidance that I need to work with Mr. Palmer and make sure that we get this taken care of in a timely manner. So, and you will be hearing from me. I'll circulate emails with you. And then, like I said, we'll have an official vote two weeks from today. Thank you. The next, I'd like to take like a five-minute break, if we can, please, before we go on to the next item. Thank you. Thank you all. The next item on the agenda is Administration of Finance Department. Councilmember Willsey.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. To introduce this item, approval of text amendments to Section 14.3.3 zoning requirements and Chapter 15, special events, filming, and public use of city facilities of the City of Roswell Code of Ordinances. This is the second reading by Mr. Davidson, and the item will be presented by Michael Fisher.
Mr. Davidson.
Thank you. This is an ordinance to delete Section 14.3.3 of the City of Roswell Code of Ordinances regarding special events and to amend Chapter 15, special events, filming, and public use of city facilities of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Roswell and for other purposes. Now, therefore, the mayor and council of the City of Roswell pursuant to their authority do hereby adopt the following amendment, text of which is incorporated herein by reference, and have approved this as the second reading.
Thank you, Mr. Davidson. I'm sorry, Mayor. Go ahead.
No, I was just calling on you.
This is the second reading. We don't have any other changes. After we had the first reading, we've had a lot of discussion, but it basically opens up the special events to all zonings with conservation residential zoning, coming back to mayor and council for a final approval. And other than that, no real changes from what we currently do for special events other than some text amendments to clean up the ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Fisher. Does council have any questions? Councilmember Palermo.
Mr. Fisher, I'm actually just going to repeat the same question I asked you at the first reading. It's all clear and on the record. So to be clear, if this passes tonight as written, then someone with a conservation-type zoning, they could request an ongoing event as long as it's a maximum of three consecutive nights. So meaning, they could request that they want three nights per week for multiple weeks during the summer, perhaps for the entire summer. And ultimately, they'd be allowed to make that request. It would come to mayor and council, and mayor and council could weigh in if that was appropriate or inappropriate, and either approve, deny, or approve a modified version. Is that accurate?
That is correct, with the exception that that is with alcohol. So it's three consecutive days with alcohol. If there's an event that doesn't have alcohol, we don't even have a duration. We'll have to look at those events through special events as they come in. If it's conservation residential, it will come before you all first. But yes, what you're saying is correct with the caveat that that's with alcohol.
Excellent. Thank you.
Additional questions from council? Councilmember Willsey.
Yes, thank you. And, you know, with that guideline, could you clarify, what would be the public notification process for such an application and hearing?
Other than what we would do for the agenda, it will actually go on a committee and council agenda.
It would go on a committee and a council agenda?
That's correct.
Okay, all right, great. Thank you.
Additional questions from council? We've got one person in the audience that would like to speak on this topic. And let me just take the opportunity now to, our Zoom will, we've got a maximum of five minutes, so our Zoom will cut you off after that. So I apologize for any abrupt cutting off right now. But in the audience, we have got Mr. Jason Yowell. Mr. Yowell, are you present?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Yeah, I, of course, cannot help but feel that this particular facet of the ordinance is directed at my property on Azalea Drive, as it is really the only property in the entirety of the city's own conservation that would be subject to, you know, this ordinance. And there's just a certain specificity to it. The fact of the matter is, the zoning for Azalea Park, you know, is unlawful because of egregious violations in the implementation of the 2014 UDC zoning code. There's no record of discussion about what would be conservation, what would be rec. If you read what is rec, Azalea Park really fits that description. The Vicry Creek area really fits conservation. Yet Vicry Creek is zoned rec, and Azalea Park is zoned conservation. And I think the reason was to masquerade the fact that they wanted to, the council at the time wanted to zero out the economic use of my property and masquerade it as a larger procedure. There's just no way, when you look at how the UDC is written, that Azalea Park would be conservation and that you'd have rec for Vicry Creek. There's no record of meetings. There's no record of rubric. There's nothing. And these are all requirements clearly outlined in Georgia State Zoning Procedure Law. These are egregious violations. The land use plan that was in effect from the UDC was implemented in 2014, had only one area in the entirety of the city designated for conservation, and that was Vicry Creek. My property was residential. It was zoned. It was designated in the land use plan as suburban. The land use plan wasn't changed until after 2014. changed until after the UDC was implemented, again, an egregious violation of state zoning procedure law. I've been very, very patient with the city, and the city keeps trying to find ways to mess with me and my property, and to deprive me of the economic use of it. And it, it, I mean, you would think that your, your council would be familiar with things like state zoning procedure law, US constitutional law. You play with fire with this property. I've been very patient. Can anyone explain to me why conservation is the only category besides residential that's subject to special review by a council? What's the justification that isn't specific to my property? Can anyone answer that question?
That's your only question, Mr. Yowell, or do you have additional questions?
Well, that, that, that's my main question. And my other question is, how are you going to review an application that we come in with and be objective? Because the criteria is so subjective about, well, if it has an adverse effect on neighbors, or something to that effect. Well, you know, we had the one neighbor who complained about noise, but we were never in excess of the decibel volume that would justify any kind of complaint or interference by the city. And, and the police says there's nothing that we can do because they're not violating the noise ordinance. But, oh, somebody's objecting, is that, is that going to be reason for you to deny another special event permit down at the river? And, and then you've also got, you know, when you put the blanket moratorium on the special event permits because of COVID, except at the Cultural Arts Center. Well, I got news for you. That, that's a violation of US constitutional law. Equal protection under the law, due process, you can't do that kind of thing. How many times do you have to violate my rights and my property rights?
Yowell? Does Council have additional questions, comments? Councilmember Judy?
Mr. Fisher, under the current code that we have, conservation would not be able to host special events. Under this, that we are passing this evening, conservation can apply and host special events. Is that correct?
Yes, so that's correct.
Thank you.
Additional questions, comments from Council? Do I have a motion?
I, yes, Mayor, motion to approve item number three, Approval of Text Amendments to Section 14.3.3, Zoning Requirements, and Chapter 15, Special Events, Filming and Public Use of Facilities of the City of Roswell Code of Ordinances.
We've got a motion by Councilmember Willsey.
Second.
Councilmember Judy, is that a second?
Yes, ma'am.
All those in favor, please raise your hands. And it passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Now we'll move on to Community Development Department, Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, Mayor Henry. Item number four, Approval of a Conditional Use 2024133, Conditional Use 20204144, 2342, and 2350, Holcombe Bridge Road. Request for a Conditional Use for Outdoor Recreation and a Conditional Use for an Event Facility.
Thank you. I believe Mr. Turner's going to present this.
Yes, ma'am. Good evening. One second, make sure the screen is working. All right, yes, this is conditional use, two conditional use requests, one for an outdoor recreational facility, and then one for a special event facility. A little background, this application was submitted in October of last year. A neighborhood meeting was held in November, and Planning Commission met last month. Here's the location of the property off of Holcombe Bridge Road. It also has frontage on Scott Road and Old Scott Road. Property is currently zoned CX, as is the adjacent property. The property across Old Scott Road to the east is zoned for single-family homes. The properties to the north and south, across Scott Road and Holcombe Bridge Road, are zoned civic. Here's a survey of the site as it exists today. And here's the rendering that the applicants have submitted. You can see in the middle of the parking area where the outdoor recreational uses will be. Those are the pickleball courts and a park area, a green space. Planning Commission has recommended approval of this application. Staff also recommends approval. Some of the main questions we've received, and one of the items that came up mostly during Planning Commission, was related to traffic. So Rob Del Ros is here with Transportation, and he's willing to answer any questions you may have regarding traffic. He has a few slides to show people's concerns, and ComDev staff is ready for any other questions related to zoning you may have.
Mr. Del Ros.
Good evening, Councilmembers. I'll try to be brief. This material is the same thing we showed at Planning Commission several weeks ago. Real quickly, what you see on the screen, if we focus on the existing Coles Building, staff is showing five existing points of access to this property. In the yellow circles you see on the screen, there are two driveways off Scott, there is one driveway off Old Scott, there is the Signal at Fouts Road, and there is interparcial access headed west towards the Signal at Eves Road. I do want to point out, yes, there's, there's five driveways. The northwestmost driveway off Scott Road is not used very prudently, probably only just heavy vehicles. Most commonly, you're looking at those other four points of access to Coles. A second graphic, this is the developments proposal on top of our aerial, and the point I want to make to you is that their proposal is not changing any of those key five points of access. The two driveways off Scott, the one driveway off Old Scott, the access to Fouts Road Signal, and the interparcial access headed west towards Eves Road. None of those connections are being removed by this proposal. What is changing is a graphic I'll show you next. So there are some current available access routes between those yellow circles that you can do today that will be closed by this proposal. Those red lines you see on your screen are being removed by this proposal. The green lines you see on the next screen are currently allowed and still allowed once this proposal is in place. Staff feels that, yes, interparcial connectivity, there are several routes that are being removed, but there are still several routes that remain, and there are no routes that are being prohibited. If, for example, and you can see the cursor on my screen, if this east-west green line, for example, were not allowed, staff would have much, much more concern than there is today. Staff felt in reviewing this that there was nothing that we could eject to, given that, again, all those yellow circles still remain, and the routes that are currently online today are still allowed if that is, if this is constructed. One other quick note I will tell you, based on, based on conversation we've had with several of you and with the Conversation and Planning Commission, staff is taking an action regardless of how this is approved or denied today. We will be looking at the intersection of Old Scott and Holcombe Bridge. As many of you know, the Old Scott headed southwest on this graphic, there is a turn restriction at that intersection. You are prohibited from making the southbound left to go eastbound on Holcombe Bridge. That turn restriction has been in place approximately 15 to 20 years. It is not a new development. Staff will be looking at and investigating feasibility of whether there are any short-term, relatively inexpensive ways to remove that restriction, or whether anything we do would be a significant capital project. We just haven't started looking at it yet. We will, we're going to be having conversations with the state DOT, and we expect to bring that back to you for a future committee item, probably later this year. We're estimating about six to 12 months. Thank you, Kevin.
Council have any questions for staff? Yes, Councilmembers Apada.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a question for transportation. It's because if the traffic flow increased on Eves Road and Holcombe Bridge, especially to make a left turn, you know, you can go straight, you can make a right going west, or you can make a left going east, is any way to improve on the traffic light there in, in case of the volume increase by being able to go through the Kroger supermarket and the light there to make a left on the eastbound on Holcombe Bridge?
So Councilmembers Apada, this proposal won't change your ability to access that Fouts Road Signal. So yes, we would continue to monitor the, both the behavior at the Fouts Road Signal and the Eves Road Signal, as we always do. But this, ultimately, this, this proposal was not required to generate a traffic study because the amount of trips it's generating is less than the previous project. So, yes, we will continue to monitor, yes, we will continue to work with the state DOT and make adjustments, but that's not something we can necessarily quantify right now.
Well, let me follow on the question. I don't know. So if I understood correctly, then nothing will change on the cut-through from Centennial High School going into the old Coles, going in, you know, on the right side, you have Petco, then you make a left there at the turn signal, and you can go straight to the library, or you can make a left to go to Hurchiberg, or you can make a right and go to 400. This one, all of this will change, I understand.
If you don't mind, I'd like to share my screen again. So the red lines on the map are routes from Scott to the Fouts Road Signal that are currently available, that will not be available once the pickleball courts and the outside area connecting the pickleball to that white building to the south are constructed. But the green lines on the map are routes that will still be available after this is constructed. So yes, you still have the, you still have the same access between the driveways, it's just that several of those paths have been removed.
Great, thank you for the clarification.
Councilmember Willsey.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just a comment to Rob. I just want to thank RDOT for addressing the concerns. I know this, this concern came up in the neighborhood meeting and in Planning Commission, and it's one that I've heard from the neighborhood as well. So I appreciate you all taking a proactive, a proactive look at Old Scott Road and how that turn signal and the turn area can be improved, and would look, look forward to hearing what your suggestions are and what your findings are in the traffic study as soon as possible. I know, I think I shared earlier, I was eight-deep at that light this weekend. So I know it's a very popular intersection, and look forward to you all coming back with, with suggestions on how we can improve it at Old Scott Road. And then I do have a couple of questions for ComDev, and those are related specifically to, and, and they may be completely covered in the presentation by the developer, but I guess restrictions and guidelines regarding lighting and noise on the project?
Sure. So there, there's codes now that, that would have the lighting, the amount of foot candles could be at the property in the right of way, and then the noise ordinance for time of use, and those would all, all be handled in the code. And then they can speak to their specific times as well.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions of staff? I would like to hear from the applicant at this time.
Evening, Council. Jason Joseph from Mayfair Street Partners. Thank you, everyone, for having us here. It feels like a long time coming. When, when Kevin mentioned that we submitted originally in October, it's amazing, a number of months prior to even that. So it's just a privilege to be here eventually, and finally, and I just want to thank everyone for their time that they've given us today. So we are local to the area. I'm actually from the area, went to school at Chattahoochee, and I remember graduating and having Centennial High School open just a short year afterwards. So it's amazing to be back here. I grew up off Nez the Ferry, right behind Centennial, and just interesting to see that we sit here today with this amazing opportunity to redevelop what we would consider in, in our world, a dead center. Knowing the amount of traffic that goes by this area, knowing the opportunity that we have to really regentrify and create a destination on the east side of Roswell, go east side, we definitely are encouraged with this opportunity to do so. So although our focus, you know, today is ultimately on the two conditional use permits that we've requested, we appreciate staff as we've gone through the last number of months, Planning Commission, and the wonderful, we'll call it Vice and Counsel, they gave us with the approval to be in front of City Council today. Just want to thank everyone here. And really, our goal here is ultimately to create that destination on the east side. We believe that this development is the perfect opportunity in synergies from a host of different areas that's here, and we do believe that this will be the first of what we hope to be many opportunities to redevelop the east side. My partner Neil Freeman here, we've got a whole team of folks that are on today, John Bonifus, our Vice President Director, Vice President, excuse me, of Construction Development, also Principal of Mayfair, Neil Freeman, who's a partner, he's heading up this particular project. I hand it over to him, and just want to thank everyone who'll be here for questions.
Thank you, Jason. Thank you, Mayor, City Council. First of all, just want to certainly commend Kevin Turner and Rob Del Ros. They've done a great job helping us through a unique, but I've been developing real estate for 40 years in this whole pandemic, and having to do things through Zoom. Kevin and Rob have just done a great job of kind of helping us through that process. Our plans for this development, to do a redevelopment of 15 acres into a mixed-use sports-centric entertainment and training destination. The intent is for this sports complex to be a place that's not only just for sports training, but also a place that's family and dog-friendly gathering place. It's going to be anchored by a competitive socializing venue known as Picklin Social. Pickleball is the fastest-growing sport in the country, and this venue will be unique and fun, combination of 12 indoor pickleball courts, 10 outdoor pickleball courts, which are what we're mainly talking about with this conditional use permit. Also outside, we'll have an outdoor gathering space known as the yard, which will have a stage for live music. Councilmember Willsey will, will certainly meet all the noise ordinance on that. They will be lit, so if I go and just address some of that, so that with all LED lighting, no, no, no light pollution, all controlled, certainly with all the guidelines of ordinances there. And again, we've got a lot of history. I've been developing sports complexes for, for many years, so I totally understand the, the, the noise and sound, and so we certainly have no problem meeting whatever, all the ordinances there. The Rite Aid, we're going to redevelop that for our food and beverage. We'll also have an indoor ping pong venue with multiple food and beverage offerings. As part of our adaptive reuse, we plan on keeping the Petco, we plan on keeping the Mose. As, as Rob mentioned, we're keeping all the ingress and, and egress points. The, the essence of our site plan is to, to create a pedestrian-only, pedestrian-safe environment between the front of the Coles and the back of the Rite Aid, in a unique, controlled, safe, a family, family environment. Our development team has a collective experience of over 200 years. We are committed to excellence for the city of Roswell. We'll do a good job for you, and we just appreciate your consideration, and we're ready for any questions you might have.
Council have any questions? Councilmember Palermo.
Thank you. Appreciate the presentation.
Thank you, appreciate the presentation from both staff and the applicant. And if anything, knowing that it's really just, it's just two conditional uses here being requested. I actually want to apologize that, you know, it's a long process that you get to go to through. It's actually, it's my understanding, it's the same length process and detailed process you had to go through as the target development back two years ago, which was for lots of apartments, townhomes.
It is the same.
For that, I want to thank you for your patience and your determination here. This is, this is, this is something that I think is, you use the key word destination, and I think, I think that makes it really an exciting opportunity. This, this council actually moved through a law change really to our ordinance a year and a half ago. So June of, no, less than a year ago, actually, June of 2020. And the exact goal was, we want to see destinations on the, on the east side. And really everywhere, but, but especially on the east side. And in fact, when, when half the council voted against it, they said, they said, we'll not see a destination here if we're doing this. But, but you've brought something forward that I think is, is exciting. I don't know how to play pickleball, I've never played, I'm going to learn. But with that, I want to be clear to the public, there's two conditional uses. And why did you have to go through this process? One is outdoor, the outdoor activity, frankly, that would, that would include go-karts, not, not for your application. So if, if that was not required conditional use, that would include go-karts, that would include many different types of outdoor uses that may or may not be appropriate for all locations. So that's, that's why you did that. The other one is, is regarding events facility. And frankly, it's a, it's a commercial location, it's a commercial corridor. Frankly, I think we should look at, really, really this council, I think we should look at even adjusting or coming up with some, some limits where, where an applicant like this would not have to go through the, through this process. But my final thing, I actually, I do have a sincere question for you. This reminds me of when there was an organic farm that asked for rezoning on the west side. And, and council member had some questions and some concern where they potentially wanted to put some limitations. And, and basically what I said is, I would not support that because they're going out on a limb, they're taking a risk, they're doing something that a lot of the community wants to see. And I want to make sure we're really being helpful partners to really support our businesses. And, and so I asked them the question, A, I said, I'm not going to put the limitation that was suggested. And B, is there anything that we could be doing, anything through this process that you've, that you've maybe changed something based on, based on staff rules or guidance or anything like that? That I'd love to just be aware of because again, the goal is any, any business that gets approved in Roswell, I want to see them be successful. And yeah, yeah, different. So any, anything, anything that, that's been a, been a burden? It sounds like, it sounds like it's the exact plan that you proposed, the traffic that you proposed, any?
It really is, it's, it's a great question. And what I would say is probably more to developers that follow us, one of the things that we've noticed through this process with meeting with both the economic development, you know, group of, of city, and we've met with other members. What is, what's a challenge is in other cities like Alpharetta, Woodstock and others is some of what I would call more progressive, like your development authorities and other things that provide incentives to help private development come. The good news is, the plan that we set out is the plan that staff has worked with us, and there really have been no changes. And we definitely applaud, you know, I guess you call it ComDev. I just heard council member Willsey say ComDev, I like that. So what, what, what ComDev did for us, helped us through that process. Part of what we'll ultimately end up doing, hopefully if we do get this passed and go into development, this is a very expensive redevelopment project, even though we're keeping existing building structures, the civil has remained relatively the same. Part of what's there is it's still very, very expensive on redevelopment. So other incentives that we typically would have seen in other cities that aren't necessarily available now, we will be looking as you guys continue to grow and mature sort of those areas over the next few years, like the opportunity zone, you know, that's been, that's been put in play, the ability of coming back to city council for reimbursement of permit fees, impact fees, other things to help lower the overall costs, Councilman Primera. I mean, that, that's probably one of the biggest pieces that help lowering costs associated with just, just redeveloping assets just like this. So it's been great right now, you guys have been great helping us through sort of that piece. But as we look forward to it, you know, we'll see, do you have anything?
Yeah, I'll just say adaptive reuse is, you know, they're coming at a, at a time where they're going to be very popular. And sadly, there's going to be more of big boxes going dark. And so the community is really kind of trying to, how to adapt. And unfortunately, they don't come without a cost. I mean, it's costing us quite a, quite a bit to just raise the roof of the Coles to make it playable for pickleball. Just as it's just one number, and it'd be easy to walk away from something like that just because it is, it's daunting. And but my point is that that's what's going to happen throughout the country, not just in Roswell, is people are going to need to have creative adaptive reuse, but it didn't come without a cost. And that's just not developer speak. I mean, we literally can show you, you know, that just to try to fit what you need and what the consumer wants today is often hard, you know, it doesn't fit without, without really spending the money to make it happen.
Yeah, and you got, and Roswell is fortunate to have the demographic, the traffic counts, the east side has just an unbelievable amount of volume going through there, mainly just passing by. And that's where we think the opportunity is, is rather than pass by, it's time to stop and actually have, you know, someplace to be. And that's to us what is so exciting about it.
Thank you.
Great question, yeah, good question.
Council member Zapata.
Thank you, Mayor. So first, thank you so much, you know, for bringing a commercial destination project to Roswell. And we in Roswell, you know, really appreciate it. And we in East Roswell, where I live, appreciate it even more. So, you know, I've been advocating for a commercial destination place there since Cole decided to shut down. Unfortunately, if you ask my wife, unfortunately. So, but you know, that is what we want. We want, you know, developers like you who come with creative, commercial destination places all over Roswell. And especially East Roswell, where we have a lot of all the boxes that we were talking about, retail boxes that need to be reused and redeveloped. And, and I believe, an entrepreneur, and I believe that there are good ideas out there to become destination places. We have to just look for them and tell them to come to Roswell and implement the, the commercial destination project. So I have a quick question for you. Are you going to be the operators of the sport complex and the food beverage and the training facility? Or you will partner with another business operator of this complex?
Sure, so when we, when we first set out, many months even prior to October, it's a great question. First and foremost, the business that will both own and ultimately operate this is called Competitive Social Ventures. Competitive Social Ventures ultimately be the owner and the operator. It, this will be the third brand underneath the Competitive Social Ventures banner. There is, two of them will open in Alpharetta over the course of the next four to six months, called Fairway Social and Roaring Social, as well as a second Roaring Social in Winston-Salem. Pickle and Social, which will ultimately be the banner that this site, you know, is under, will be the pickle, what we'll call a pickleball entertainment, food and beverage destination led by Neil Freeman here on my left. So to answer your direct question, yes, it will be owned and operated there. And then ultimately the special events, we've not found an operator yet. It will be under partnership, and we're currently in very, very active discussions with the operator. If we ultimately end up, Neil ends up having to run that himself, he will. He's got the background and pedigree to do it along with the team. And we have partnered with an organization known as 33 Degrees that is a national organization that operates all types of food and beverage and hospitality venues that will ultimately be the partner of Competitive Social Ventures led by Brad Berhensky, Joe Riordan, Brian Decourt and Fred Cerone. And we're excited, Neil is excited about that partnership that will be announced over the next few weeks as well.
And just for a point of clarity, the, we, we are going to operate everything except the Petco will still be a third party lease. The Mose will still be a third.
Yeah, we're not operating that.
Ninety, ninety percent of what you're going to see would be owner-operated by us.
Great, thank you, I appreciate the answer and I, I like the answer.
That's great, thank you.
Council member Judy.
Thank you, Mayor. Fellas, awesome stuff here, awesome foresight and ideas to read adaptive reuse of the big boxes. I'm pumped about this, it's much needed in the city of Roswell and hopefully is a model for other areas within the city that we can put some other cool ideas. And two quick points. I think it will be important, once you get in, to look, because now the hard part starts. Let's, let's make sure we're successful and make sure the city helps you in any way, shape or form. The Target Project up the street, love for you all to work with them. Obviously, having a built-in audience up there is helpful to Pickle Social, your retail group there to be able to have people come down and eat, play, et cetera, keep the Petco in business. So connecting with them and then also connection down the way and kind of creating a, a great street there on Holcombe Bridge where, you know, you've now are feeding all each other there. And that's where the success is going to happen over there. You mentioned the pass-by traffic. I think making sure you have the built-in traffic there that will be there is going to help tons. That's number one. Number two, I'm glad you brought up the quivers or the arrows for the quiver for our, for Roswell Inc. and our new economic director. I have actually, over the last couple of weeks, been speaking with people in other cities and economic directors about outside of the opportunities and what can be brought to add to our quiver of arrows. And I am tend to bring that to committee here in the next month, my research on that. Because I think we, to your point, can help not only when you are getting started, but more when you're in business, because we need to keep our businesses in business on the east side. So if you could speak to, if you thought about connecting with those developments up in town Holcombe Bridge? And, and I just want to say thank you again for looking at us and investing in the city.
And I will say, I meant to give a shout out to the Arden Companies. They've done a phenomenal job with their site plan in there, and he still has the old target there. We have been in conversations with them, mainly first and foremost was, what if this doesn't get approved? Second part is, because we do feel that this is the right, the right spot for Picklin Social. Part two to that is, is that's whole interconnected component to what they're doing there, the resins that'll be there, the retail that'll be there, and what's happening there, we think is extraordinarily creative to create truly a side-by-side. And to your point, Councilman Judy, is that, is, is how that drive-by creates an opportunity for traffic that's already there, but then likewise creates, you know, more flow and interconnectivity between the two to help the retail that's ultimately going on their property, not to mention what's happening at Picklin Social for us. So we definitely agree.
Additional comments, questions? Yes, council member Willsey.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I just want to say thank you for investing in our community, for looking at a old big box shopping center and seeing the potential there. I think this is a tremendous opportunity to create not just a destination, but also a community center. That's something that's much needed for us in this community, in that rich and secure community. It's definitely going, undergoing a time of, I think, revitalization. And this is just another, another step to help make the community there in the Centennial note as great as it possibly can be. So I appreciate the innovative idea and putting your faith and trust in Roswell. And we look forward to supporting you going forward.
Thank you.
Council member Hall.
Thank you, Mayor Henry. And thank, thank you very much for bringing this project to Roswell. When I ran a year ago on my campaign, I had visions. I didn't know what the visions were, but I cited a project in Florida called Boxy Park, which was unique, something out of the box in a community. And this is what you've done. I mean, a boxy park wouldn't necessarily be right here in that spot, but this is Roswell's version of it. So I'm very, very excited. I just wanted to mention that also Fulton County schools and there's a lot of schools in the community, and that's an opportunity for day use. If you partner with those, potentially those organizations, when the courts perhaps might not be used by, or the facility may not be used by the other general public, which may be more weekends and evenings. So just wanted to pass that along and wish you much success.
I just, just to comment there, Councilman Hall is, Councilperson Hall is that when pickleball first started, it was generally for an older crowd like myself. But now it truly is for a younger and everything in between, which is kind of exciting. And I noticed that AAU actually has a pickleball tournament association. And we envision, you know, generating quite a few hotel rooms in here. But it was, one of the things that really got us really charged about doing this is the fact it's all ages now.
Additional comments, questions? Council members of Potters.
Thank you, Mayor Henry. Is any touch you can share with us, it'll be the concept of the food and beverage aspect of the business? Is any details that you can share with us at this point? Or is early to share this with us? I mean, I'm just to know, I live a couple of miles away and, and I would love to know what kind of options will be there for food and beverage in, in your concept?
Well, I would just consider it be fun, it'd be, I would say casual. Again, we, if you're, it's, it's, it's going to be, it's going to be an exercise gear most of the time. So, or just certainly there as a park, is if you bring your dog, you know, relaxed atmosphere. So you're going to have more of a relaxed atmosphere on the, on the food as well. It will be certainly reasonable and approachable, I would say on that. We do have a drive-through, so that's one thing with COVID, we learned that's a certainly wonderful thing to have. We have been a little concerned about bringing the highest level of quality of food in the indoor from the Rite Aid. So because of that, we're actually going to have a food truck that will be providing a warm food on the indoor for the audience. So we're actually trying to think of, of all angles so that your experience is, you know, a great experience, and you're not going to get cold food, you're going to get the greatest service and the best food that could be offered. So we are committed that, we've talked about a Peruvian chicken, but I can't say that we've gotten that far into it, you know, but we are, just to say it's approachable, it'll be fun and casual, it'll be the best way.
And one thing that I would mention to all councils is that if you liken the whole notion of competitive socializing, where you look at the, at the best breed and the first introduced it that anyone would recognize on this call, being Topgolf, where it's not about the golf, it ultimately golf creates the competitions, the food, it's the socialization, it's the competitive component that creates it. But if you think about it, Topgolf's got great food, right? And that's one piece about it, is basically it's a cheeseburger, chicken fingers, we laugh at. It's still great cheeseburgers, it's great chicken fingers, and it's great other pieces. So regardless of ultimately what the, what to his point, whether it's Peruvian chicken or whether it's great cheeseburgers, it'll ultimately be of a class that ultimately is, is deliverable, that it's best in class, whatever, whatever it fits. We want to make sure people walk away thinking, I can go there for people watching as much as I can because the food is great, the beverage is great. And ultimately, that doesn't mean I have to play pickleball just because it's there. And that is an important piece to that.
Great, thank you, you made me hungry now.
That's right, we're hungry too, yes. That's right.
Additional comments, questions from council before I open it up to the public? Gentlemen, I'll come back to you for rebuttal after we hear from the public. We've got two folks that would like to speak. The first one is Mr. Jason Sabatino.
Thank you, Mayor, can you hear me okay?
Yes, thank you.
Awesome, awesome. Well, first off, I want to thank Mr. Joseph and his partners, you know, for bringing this project forward. Hopefully, as you've seen tonight and as I've seen over the last couple of months, they're real excited about it, they're very approachable. And I've said to several neighbors, including I think a few of the council members here tonight, it's, it's really refreshing to see people bringing new opportunities to Roswell in the way that they're doing it, in the way that they're acting and approaching it. So really appreciate that and can't wait to get settled in over there. Just wanted to. Just wanted to, I, you know, aside from supporting this project 1,000%, you know, I, I wanted to just raise the flag that, you know, in the planning commission meeting, it was, it was brought up and it was a concern and it was obviously addressed earlier about the, you know, the, getting the, around this particular site plan now with traffic. And really want to encourage council to, you know, hold RDOT accountable going forward to, you know, identify a solution here. When the single-family homes adjacent to this property were being approved, one of the major issues that were addressed is that project was coming through the process was traffic flow on Old Scott Road, not Scott Road, but Old Scott Road. And at that time, it was widely accepted that the traffic flow through the shopping center to the way that Fouts Road was, you know, an acceptable solution. So, you know, it hasn't been 15, 20 years. I don't, I think it's more like 10 to 15 years that Old Scott was shut off. But we really need to look at having that opened back up. And if you go down to Scott Road and Holcomb Bridge Road on the west side, you'll see that traffic is allowed to turn left there. So hopefully we can work to find a solution there. The other comment that I wanted to make was really just highlighting something I've noticed in this process to, to some of our council members in that when the East Village project came up, Darren Collier, who was advocating for that, spoke religiously about how the exact project that Mr. Joseph and his partners is bringing forward would not work, could not work, will never happen, ever, 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 ever. And some of our council members said, oh, you know what? We can never have anything like this. But then we have other council members that for the last couple of years have been advocating for a destination, a place that we can go to, somewhere that will bring the community together. And Mr. Joseph and his partners had that same vision. And now it looks like we're going to get something at this location that's going to be fantastic. But I can't help but think how fantastic this project could have been at the Target site where there could have been more opportunity to have more, you know, they could have been a partner in that where we could have had more commercial, more mixed use, more, you know, socialization, bringing more things together. So I just want to point out that, you know, when we have folks that come to council and say things cannot be done and they're so, you know, they're so closed-minded, you know, know that there's somebody else out there, if we just look hard enough, that is going to be able to, you know, bring a positive impact on our community. And hopefully, if we had had an economic developer back then, maybe, you know, there could have been more connections made. I, I don't know what backgrounds and the history is with Mr. Joseph and his partners on this project prior to going public. But I, I just want to say that this is fantastic. I really hope every, and I think everyone here will support it tonight. But we've got to get the, we've got to get a left hand onto Holcomb Bridge Road somehow. And let's be more open-minded as new developments, like where the Studio Movie Grill is, you know, I, I assume will eventually come to council and know that there are more, there, I'm sure are more partners like Mr. Joseph out there that will, you know, be willing to, you know, bring positive impact in the East Roswell community. So thank you for your support tonight and Mr. Joseph and his partners, thank you for bringing an excellent project. I know the community is 1,000% behind you.
Thank you. The next person I, I'm being told is not in the queue, is Amanda Lester. Available to speak from the audience? No, thank you. I'm sorry. She dropped off the queue. So gentlemen, would you like a few minutes for rebuttal before I call for a motion and comments from council?
No, thank you. We're, we're fine. Thank you so much, Jason, for, for bringing that up as well. We appreciate your support and, and all the public support thus far. It's been somewhat overwhelming. Just from a positive perspective and just couldn't tell you how much we just appreciate everybody's support tonight. Thank you.
Great. I'm glad that you have had a very positive experience in Roswell and I know that folks are really looking forward to this use in the old Kohl Center. Councilmember Palermo.
Just really quick, I forget if it was mentioned earlier, can you summarize the, if, if it's approved tonight, what the, what the timeline looks like?
Sure. So right now, we're proposed, assuming everything, you know, goes through and the rescission period is out as well, closing sometime mid-April with the idea of aggressively trying to open before year end, but ultimately first quarter of '22 is our opening timeframe. Right, John? Okay. Construction guy. Yeah, so.
And I want to center, but.
Right. Don't ask Neil. So. But that, that's, that's realistic is sometime quarter one of '22. Thank you.
Additional comments, questions from council before I entertain a motion? Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, Mayor. I would like to make a motion for approval of CU 2020-4133, CU 2020-4144, 2342 and 2350 Holcomb Bridge Road. Request for a conditional use for outdoor recreation and a conditional use for an event facility.
Thank you.
We've got a motion by Councilmember Hall. I hear you, Councilmember Zapata. We've got a second by Councilmember Zapata. Councilmember Willsey, a separate clarifying question?
I was raising my hand to be called on for a second.
Eddie did first. Thanks.
Gentlemen, I, I think it's fairly safe that you probably just earned six seconds. The official call was Councilmember Zapata. So all of those in favor, please raise your hands. And it passes unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen.
I think, thank you, thank you, thank you all. Forward to seeing. It's our guest.
Thanks. Before I turn this back over to Councilmember Hall and the next item, there has been a suggestion of the appearance of impropriety of my presiding over this next item. I would like to tell you that I have known Kevin Caldwell for 20 years. As a matter of fact, I met him here at City Hall. He was here for a zoning issue. I was here for a different one and I sat next to he and his wife Kristen. Over the last 20 years, Kevin Caldwell co-authored The Tree Ordinance with me, worked very hard on it. He was on the design review board for eight years. And also, he has donated his time and worked on many of my campaigns over those years and has never asked anything of me. He has just always been a firm supporter. So I will be recusing myself. And this will go to Councilmember Jenny.
Yes, Mayor. Due to the ongoing attempt by some council members and citizens to villainize other council members and citizens in Roswell as corrupt for receiving legal, reported and disclosed campaign contributions, I'll recuse myself as well from the review, the vote on item number five. Mr. Caldwell donated to my election campaign over three years ago when I ran for post six. Mr. Caldwell has saved my dogwoods in my front yard and many of my family and friends' trees over the years, which is where I met him. I had not decided how I'd vote tonight and appreciate all of the citizens that wrote respectful letters in support and against this project. In my opinion, this is an important vote tonight and should have a full council who all have followed federal, state and local campaign laws. Therefore, I'll be recusing myself. This location deserves the right development and is very important, but I will see you all on the next issue.
So it is up to, it's up to the remaining council members to choose a mayor, an acting mayor for this item since the mayor and the mayor pro tem is, are not available.
So I'd, I'd actually like to nominate Councilmember Willsey and my reasoning is because she has experience being mayor pro tem. Councilman Zapata does too. He's, he was a phenomenal mayor pro tem, but that being said, he was the most recent mayor pro tem and there are rules regarding consecutive. So I, I, I would, I would definitely like to, to see if Councilmember Willsey, if there's support for her becoming mayor pro tem.
I can second that.
You can speak.
Thank you. I, I think we went through this a couple of weeks ago discussing the criteria. And I would like to see one of my, one of the more senior members become mayor, acting pro tem at the moment because that was something that both Councilmember Palermo and Councilmembers Zapata stressed as being a very important criteria.
Yeah, in this case, I would prefer Councilmember Willsey since she has the experience as a mayor pro tem in the past. She was the first, I mean, I guess the first year she was a mayor pro tem. So she got the experience to conduct the meeting and the, the expertise. So I would propose Councilmember Willsey. Based on my criteria.
I would support Councilmember Willsey.
Councilmember Willsey, are you willing to be the mayor pro tem?
Yes, sir, I am and I'm very honored to be selected by my colleagues. So would you like for me to come downstairs or should I?
It's up to you. This is your meeting now.
Thank you. I will choose to preside from here. Actually, I will come down if you don't mind.
And while, Councilmember Willsey, while you, while you go down there, what I, what I will mention based on, based on the comments that I, that I heard is, is just again, so the public is aware. Within our ethics code, there is a requirement to avoid impropriety and avoid the perception of impropriety. And in situations that we've had in the past where council members took large donations from, from developers and then voted for their property, voted for their proposals, even though it involved, involved things that did not follow the, the code. And, and basically from strangers, I got emails really saying that they felt, they felt it was because of money that decision was, was being made. And the irony is that, and, and, and with that, with that development, it was true. The irony is shortly thereafter, the Target property, there were same emails of people saying it was because of impropriety, because of money, and that wasn't true. And so I've brought up that I, that I think there is, it does create a perception and it's one that I think we should address and it's one I've, I've reached out to council and wanting to address. But that being said, there's no requirement tonight. That was a choice that, that the mayor, Mayor Henry made and Councilman Judy made. I think it was a, a good choice because it's, it's something where we don't want residents getting the wrong, the wrong, the wrong idea on, on what is the motivation. But nonetheless, that, that was, that was currently optional. But, but again, I, I applaud. Councilman Tajia, what was that?
I said, can we get on with the item, please?
Oh, I, I was waiting for Councilmember Willsey to get downstairs. That's why I wanted to bring that up on, on, on that.
It's off point and I'd like to get on with the meeting, please.
It wasn't off point at all. We just had, we just actually had two members.
Come on, let's deal with the item. A lot of people, you know, we, we, we need to deal with the item.
We, we absolutely do. And I, I think people need to know.
Willsey, to come down, safety. There she is.
Yes, I, I thank you, Councilmember Hall, for reading the item at this point. I would like to call and come Deb to please present the item.
I have not presented the item yet.
You, didn't you read, you read the item?
No.
I believe you did, actually. Would you like to read the item again, please?
Thank you. Yes. Item number five, PV 2020-5122, 280, 300, 310 and 320, Crossville Road Parkway Village. Variance request to section 10 dot 2 dot 3, neighborhood compatibility buffer to reduce the buffer from 150 feet to 40 feet. Mayor Pro Tem Willsey, I turn it back to you.
Yes, thank you, Councilmember Hall. And I would like to ask Come Deb to please present the item.
Sorry, just a second. Let me get it going here. Yeah, well, sorry. Okay. Here we are. So this is a Parkway Village variance request. As stated by Councilmember Hall, located at 280, 300, 310 and 320, East Crossville Road. Here's an aerial view of the properties. The property is currently zoned Parkway Village. This is not a rezoning request. Townhomes are permitted to use in the Parkway Village zoning district. The applicant is requesting a neighborhood compatibility buffer variance within this district. Reduce the buffer from 150 feet to 40 feet along the perimeter of the property abutting to residential zone properties. Here's the zoning of the property. As you can see, the pink, the pink color is the Parkway Village zoning district. The yellow color is single-family residential zone properties. So the perimeter of the district is everything abutting the yellow color. They're looking to propose a 40-foot buffer along the perimeter of the property abutting to RS-18 zone properties. So in this map here, the RS-18 zone properties are the yellow color. The proposed site plan that they submitted shows the townhomes, which are, as is stated, a permitted use in the Parkway Village District with a 40-foot buffer along those areas of the perimeter, along the property lines. Northern end, the eastern side and the western side where the stream is located. This shows you the buffer area if it was a 150-foot buffer requirement, since that's what's required, 150 feet. The only portion that's a little bit different is this part down here, which technically would not need a buffer as the property right here is zoned Parkway Village. But this is the area showing in from the property lines, 150 feet. So the buffer area is around 4.1 acres. This, the white area here is the area that would be developable. Parkway Village was adopted as an overlay in '92. Council at the time was looking at this corridor as a commercial corridor, which is what created the 150-foot buffer requirement. Staff did make a recommendation of denial of the buffer reduction from 150 feet to 40 feet. Do you have any questions for staff?
Mayor Pro Tem Willsey? I, I've gotten a couple of texts that the video feed is no longer working to this meeting, the public feed.
Mine, mine is working.
IT is working on, on that. So hopefully they'll get the feed restored very quickly.
I don't want to be out of order here, but mine is working.
Thank you, Mr. Caldwell. I hope not too many people, other people are having problems, but I do know that IT is working on, on resolving the problems quickly as I can. Thank you, Jackie, for your presentation. Does council have any questions? Councilmember Palermo.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Willsey. So I guess, I guess my, my question and my, my understanding was that there was in, there was a request by the applicant to defer this item and I just wanted to, to really just, just, just understand that.
So the applicant did send in a request for deferral. However, they did want to present to get feedback from the council. So they are here to present and it'll be up to the council whether they choose to defer the item or make another motion.
Okay, and thank you. And so with, with that, I guess my, my, my preference would be, and so, so Mr. Caldwell, my, my question is ultimately regarding, regarding the, the deferral request, which we did update into our code to make sure that we're giving fair. into our code to make sure that we're giving fair, you know, disclosure and information to the public, that those requests are required to come in, I forget the time, but let's just, I believe it's Friday, but that being said, I certainly want to be supportive, but based on the fact that because this was a variance, there was not a requirement to have a neighborhood meeting, and it's something where I actually think this council should look at, I think that in reality, when there is something that's going to impact, you know, other properties, et cetera, that we really should be having in our code, a neighborhood meeting at all times, and in fact, I believe it might have even been within the Parkway Village, if not, it would have been right near the Parkway Village, there was a similar, well, not similar, it was a completely different type request, but with the deferral, we ended up requesting that there be a neighborhood meeting, and Mr. Caldwell, I guess I'm wondering what your thoughts would be, if we're to support the deferral, but have an official neighborhood meeting that staff can assist in, and just the opportunity to get with the neighbors, and really show what you're thinking, and hopefully come to a good win-win.
Is it appropriate for me to answer to that?
Actually, thank you, Councilmember Palermo, and Mr. Caldwell, if you could wait just a minute, I'd like to ask the city attorney, David Davidson, to outline what our options are here, and what can and cannot be discussed.
So, if the council wishes to defer, my recommendation to council, you're free to listen to the applicant and all the residents, my recommendation to you would be not to comment on anything, and let it come back for the next public hearing, if you're going to defer, if you're not going to defer, I'd go forward with a full public hearing and make your decision there.
Thank you, I have a number of issues with this proposal, and a whole lot of questions that if I, that I'm really struggling with, not the least of which is what Councilmember Palermo just brought up, and so without doing what our legal counsel has advised, you know, I would strongly encourage the deferral tonight, and come back at a later date with more information, and I'd be happy, you know, to share some of the thoughts when that's appropriate, some of the concerns that I have over this presentation and project, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Tizer, Councilmember Zapata?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Willsey, I have a question for Jackie Deibel about, did the applicant state the reason of asking for a deferral?
Their reason that they indicated was to receive feedback from the council, and then go from there, as far from what I could tell from their request, so...
Okay, thank you.
Okay, all right, thank you, Councilmembers Zapata. Any more questions from council, Councilmember Palermo?
I guess another question for Mr. Caldwell would be, what's a date that you were envisioning for that deferral, on what would be helpful and appropriate?
I'm going to assume it's okay to speak now, I'm trying to follow the court.
Sure, sorry, first of all, I would just like to ask, after hearing from members of council, if there is at this point a motion to defer, or would you like to hear from the applicant? My understanding is that if there's a motion to defer, we can still hear public comment, or if there's no motion to defer, we will hear from the applicant, as well as the public, and then make a motion after public comment.
Mayor Pro Tem?
Yeah, Councilmember Palermo?
So I am supportive of a deferral, and I'm happy to make that motion, however, in that motion, I'd want to make sure I have a specific date, so that's why I just want to get that clarification on the request, and also, again, just wondering if there's any appetite for the city to support any official neighborhood meeting, if Mr. Caldwell would be interested or not.
Councilmember Tizer?
Thank you, you know, I'm supportive of the same, I think giving a longer rather than shorter time on the deferral is probably a good idea, since there are, like I say, a lot of questions on this one. I guess if I was suggesting a number, you know, probably, you know, 90 days or so would probably be reasonable, don't know, you know, how that would play.
Councilmember Hall, is there a motion, or do you have a comment?
I just wanted to clarify, so with Mr. Davidson, if we can include the, if we make a motion to defer, we can add the meeting with the community as part of that motion, I just want to clarify that, because I'll include that with the motion.
So you can make that motion, the applicant doesn't have to follow that motion, you might want to ask him if he's willing to meet with the neighbors, there's no requirement in the code for that, so this is a deferral at his request, but I don't know if he wants to meet with the neighbors or not, that's, you know, he can address that, and I'm not sure if 90 days, Jackie, is allowed on this.
If you defer, there's no specific number on this, since it's a variance request, so they can put 90 days if they, so if that number works for them.
Thank you.
Mr. Caldwell, would you be willing to consider a neighborhood meeting within 90 days, so that you could come back to council within 90 days?
First of all, thank you for framing it this way, Councilman Palermo, and just for understanding of who's the client and who's not, I'm technically not the client, my client is represented by Steve Rowe, and I have decided to engage, because I'm a member of this community, and I've served this community, and I do not want to run from what I had no idea was going to surface, I, we had no idea, and I'm humbled, and I'm upset about that, and yes, we, I would advise, and Mr. Rowe would have to talk to Mr. Jolly, but I do, I know that Mr. Jolly, and Mr. Rowe, and myself have already committed to meeting with the neighbors, we have sat down and reworked, and done all kinds of massaging, or whatever we think we can talk about, that would meet something that I believe is a tremendous compromise, that would make a tremendous, would hopefully take away from a lot of the angst and the anxiety that we're all having, and I'm not sure that I can be the one that would say 90, but it seems to me that we are ready, able, and willing, and I mean willing, I talked to everybody that called me, I talked to everybody that emailed me, and I talked to everybody that would speak to me, and tried to ask for their feedback, many of these folks, by the way, are clients or friends of mine, or people that I've done in-kind things for over the last 23 years, in fact, I've worked and gave away over $3,000 worth of services for the neighborhood that most of the neighborhood maybe doesn't know, to clear the entryway for them, and I think that I want to show goodwill, and I'm sorry to be so verbose, but I am very passionate about giving the community something different than what they have now, which is a view of all of my vehicles, and other people's vehicles, and giving them something that is a use that blends with their community better, and improves their values of their real estate, and I think we could have this discussion, and do it in 60 days or less, without any problem, and as long as, again, I'm not the client, I'm just, I'm doing something nobody does when they sell the property, I'm getting involved, I'm rolling my sleeves up, and I want to do right, I've been here since 1990, and I want to do right by my neighbors, one of my neighbors, I call my other mother, okay, that's how close I am to these people, the last piece of property we bought, they were my friends, and that piece of property, when they died, when the father died, I promised the son, whenever it was right, I would give him full commercial appraised value of the property, not knowing that that would trigger this whole set of events that has happened here, which put this over seven acres, and I was led by a professional to tell me that everything would be fine, and this would work beautifully, and now I'm as surprised as probably most of the public is, that all of a sudden, this is an issue, and I'm saddened by it, but I don't want to walk away from it, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Caldwell.
So 60 days to answer your question, sorry with my long winded blow.
Thank you, Mr. Caldwell, I believe we've heard Mr. Caldwell's willing to come back within 60 days, so Councilmember Hall, I would like to return the question to you, if you would like to make a motion.
I would, I don't know if Councilmember Zapata has a question before I do?
Councilmember Zapata, do you have a question?
Yes, thank you, so this question is for staff, just to clarify, who is the applicant? I'm confused here now, so, I don't know, Jackie can answer this question?
The applicant is...
I'm trying to understand.
The representative for the applicant is Steve Rowe, and he is here this evening on the call.
The applicant is Providence Land Development, which is Warren Jolly.
So how is the process between the applicants and the public, and I'm trying to understand, you know...
The way your variance process works, there is no requirement of a public hearing, and we actually have had informal discussions, or Kevin has, with his neighbors regarding the application over the years, most of the angst has happened in the last, I would say, three to four days, so that's when we really started getting feedback, much of it negative, and we really don't have time right now to really address it, where if we had 60 days, we could address it, have some discussions, some back and forth, explain our position, find out what the other people's position is, and I think we can work through a solution that meets everybody's challenges, we just need more time to do it.
Thank you, Mr. Rowe, as the attorney stated, and com dev has stated, this neighborhood meeting is well outside the normal process for variance, but the applicant is willing to go post a neighborhood meeting and take additional input from the community, so again, Councilmember Hall?
Thank you, Mayor Willsey, I'm prepared to make my motion, I make a motion for deferral, item PB 2020-5122, 280, 300, 310, and 320, Crossville Road Parkway Village, variance request to section 10.2.3, neighborhood compatibility buffer, to reduce the buffer from 150 feet to 40 feet, and the deferral will be for 60 days, to come back on April 12th, I believe that is the correct date, if somebody can check me on that, and the condition be that the applicant have a neighborhood meeting with the community, and speaking for staff, that they will help coordinate that.
Thank you, Councilmember Hall, Mr. Caldwell, I see your hand up, do you have a question?
Again, I'm trying to follow the court, man, I feel horrible about interrupting, having sat in a much reduced position, may I make the polite suggestion that we have a community development person available to help sort of moderate the meetings, because I think part of, at least my angst, and what the angst I hear, is that we don't have those historical backdrops available, and I think it would help if you would consider putting in your motion to have somebody from the city, com dev, to help facilitate, or moderate, or whatever the proper word is, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Caldwell, in this situation, I think it's not a practice, it's something that we can certainly look at, to have com dev facilitate the meeting, unless that's something that you'd like to include in your motion.
I think we did that, I think, recently.
To have com dev?
Yes, is there any question?
Yes, please, Councilmember Palermo.
Ms. Deibel, recently, the daycare that was approved on Crab Apple, that was a, I believe it was a conditional use request, but whatever the zoning request was, they were not required to do a neighborhood meeting, but that was something that the applicant agreed to, and council included, and I had thought com dev staff assisted them, and basically moderated, or managed, or whatever the right word is, the neighborhood meeting the same way that they would for those that are required within our code, is that accurate?
That is accurate, it was a Parkway Village item, it was not a conditional use, and we did moderate it, we set it up, we set the time, and we were the moderator, so yes, we have done that, and can do it again.
So, yeah, because I think Mr. Caldwell made a very reasonable request for that, to make sure that the city staff is managing that.
I'd like, as Councilmember Hall, if she would like to amend her motion, then I'd like to ask for a second, and then I would also like to let the public know that we will take public comment, so, but this, we will not be voting on the item per se, it will be going back to the community, and will come back for a public hearing later. Councilmember Hall?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem Willsey, I will amend the motion to include that com dev facilitate the meeting.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Tizer, all in favor? Actually, let's hear the, excuse me, let's hear from the public first, I think we have some people waiting to speak, Victor Branscombe, are you available and on the line?
Yes, ma'am, I am.
All right, thank you, please go ahead.
I'm sorry?
Please go ahead, you are live.
My name is Victor Branscombe, my wife Andrea, and I live at 265 Putting Green Lane, we have been residences of the city of Roswell for only four years, of course, when we moved in, we knew what was behind us in the Caldwell property, and we were prepared to deal with that, since this, I want to bring up something that Mr. Rowe said about this just coming to light, these things were just made available to us recently, we got the postcard about the meeting, and then found out that the meeting was going to be virtual because of COVID, so, and I thought that we were going to have the opportunity to speak in council, I understand that that's not a possibility now, so we're going to deal with this, but I would like to say on my wife's behalf, and we are opposed to the variance to reduce the buffer from 150 to 40 feet, this proposed buffer reduction is nearly 75% of that that is indicated in ordinance, it's an extremely significant reduction, and we feel that will have a negative impact on the quality of our lives, as well as the lives of other Roswell residents, because this may set a precedent for future projects that we aren't aware of, and how many people in the community will be affected by that is an unknown, this reduction would violate the spirit and letter of the comprehensive plan for the Parkway Village overlay district, the aspect of which is a rural development characteristic. This proposed buffer variance will not only negatively impact the natural beauty of our area, but it will also create a noise and light pollution for the residents that are abutted to the properties, at this time, I respectfully ask council to deny this variance request. and uphold our current zoning ordinances and maintain the spirit and letter of the city development plan, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Branscombe, next we have, um, Kelly Skelly. Kelly, are you online?
Yes, I am. Okay, I'm starting my five minutes, I want to make sure I'm not going to be cut short. Uh, my name is Kelly, I'm an eleven year resident of Roswell City and Georgia has been my home for over thirty-eight years. In light of the presentations we all heard, because the residents have been waiting for three plus hours now to be heard, at the beginning of this meeting highlighting the importance of our shared humanity and our shared past, along with the amount of time sharing Roswell City history, I don't see that our mayor and our city council on this call are adequately taking into account the present travesty of what you, the city leaders have approved and destroying the lands of the Indians and earliest Roswell settlers that have been discussed here today, tonight. So much time has been spent talking about these tight-knit communities. And honestly, I know for a fact that all of these indigenous people who lived here before us, along with all those who came after, will be rolling over in their graves if they saw the density of the developments being proposed here in front of you, along with the expansion into our natural forests and natural green spaces. That being said, this is why I am here. Our neighborhood, Chatham's Greenway, is unique, much like most of the neighborhoods that have been here in Roswell for decades and decades. Our neighborhood sits right inside and surrounded by one of the oldest and most established pine forests that existed in Georgia and, Georgia in the late eighteen hundreds, all the way up through the nineteen nineties. Our neighborhood has wider streets, quaint and quiet front, side and backyards. And we enjoy larger lots with, with existing tall trees and very mature shrubs, lush landscapes, along with wide variety of wildlife all around us. Over the past decade, I personally have watched Roswell City fundamentally change in its look, its feel and its character. What draws so many to Roswell and what drew my family over a decade ago was how it felt like a smaller quaint town nestled just outside of the boom, booming metro, not far down Highway four hundred. I do agree that progress is a good thing when it is kept in constant check for existing residents and those who have not yet found us on the map. Sadly, I do not feel Roswell residents can still boast about living in a smaller feel, lovely and uniformed, pleasantly calm and quieter eclectic city. You Roswell City officials have been allowing for fundamental change to what had historically been allowed pre-two thousand fourteen. Regretfully, I am seeing changes to requirements with building height, building unit density, building structure materials, building uniformity and character, buffer width, buffer length, the internal areas of buffer being left completely empty, a mature landscaping. Every new development over the past one to five years I have seen has had little to no landscaping buffer planted even years after being developed, why is this? I am seeing city codes, development rules being broken right, left and center. These are nicely categorized and clearly listed on our city's Unified Development Code. I have been studying this the past three weeks. I am asking that each of you look at your own Roswell City Unified Development Code over the next few hours, the next few days, and now it sounds like the next two months. In this case, petitions specifically look over sections ten point two point three, ten point two point four, for clear answers on how to proceed and future development of any area of our communities. Per, for Parkway Village, as my neighbor Victor stated, this was to be a rural, characterized, homely, quaint development and what you are proposing, proposing passing is going to be anything but that. Your predecessors were seriously tasked with upholding purposely planned and written down city requirements and code. Of course, this included specific requirements for, for buffer length, depth and width. It also specified required landscaping that should be planted inside these buffers while in development phase. We are asking you today to put a stop to these rules and codes being ignored. Why do they exist if they are just to be ignored? You cannot miss the fact that heavily forested and heavily foliage lots are being clear cut to nothing in Roswell. We are all seeing it. This is both just deeply concerning for Roswell residents and very upsetting to our quality of life day to day. We feel it is your responsibility, along with every city, every single city council member's responsibility to safeguard the feel of our city and the quality of life for us. And you represent us and you serve us in the city government. Honestly, we feel you're letting us down. You need to be strongly enforcing your own set written rules about our city's zoning laws, our city's clearly written development code and each resident's obligations to be a good citizen, we all have a role to play here. The last thing I'm.
Uh, thank you, Mrs. Skelly. Um, next we have, uh, Justin Wallace, Justin. Are you in the line?
Hey, yeah, are you able to hear me?
Uh, yes, yes, I can.
Okay. Um, yeah, thanks, thanks for your time. Um, I, I think you guys have heard kind of the, the passion, uh, in my neighbors' voices, um, a lot of that concern, I believe, is very much justified, um, and part of the reason that we're so concerned seems to be the, uh, very recent rollout of information. I, I know, I only heard about this through word of mouth over the past, uh, maybe week from, you know, my concerned neighbors trying to, um, loop everybody in, make sure that everybody was informed on this. Um, see, my name is Justin Wallace, I live at two eighty-five Putting Green Lane, uh, which is directly behind, uh, Mr. Caldwell's property. Um, if I look at my back window, I can see his, his trucks, um, you know, I hear him every morning at, at six o'clock, um, which is, uh, you know, not the best. Um, so I, I live in one of the homes that would be directly adjacent to the proposed development. Um, I know me and my wife would be directly impacted by the reduced buffer zone, um, through, you know, increased traffic, uh, noise and light pollution. Um, I believe that the current buffer zoning rules were put in place for, you know, exactly this situation and should be enforced, um, as originally written. Um, I, I do, do, I don't think that the, um, petitioner should be requesting a, a flex in these rules as opposed to developing, um, in accordance with the existing, um, I, I think it's the UDC. Um, you know, I think we are justified and we're just asking, me and my neighbors are, are just asking for the appropriate buffer to be maintained, um, you know, regardless of how the land is developed. Um, even though one of my concerns, you know, just hearing more about the petition and the development is both the density and the type of development. So I, I think that just adds to the list of, of our, of our very valid concerns. Um, uh, yeah, I would like to, to note that the, you know, the only way we heard about this was through word of mouth. I believe that this were, uh, you know, a traditional town hall meeting, you see even more ardent, uh, oppositions to petition. Um, and, and it's, I, I'm just, uh, you know, our neighborhood and everybody who I've talked to is very unified in opposition to specifically the reduction in this buffer for this development. So, yeah, I, I look forward to, uh, collaboration with Mr. Caldwell and the developers. Um, I thank, you know, the council for appropriately recusing themselves and the mayor. Um, and, yeah, looking forward to, to, um, voicing our concerns in, in a, in a neighborhood meeting, uh, so, thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Wallace. Um, again, I just want to reinforce that there will be a community, a neighborhood meeting, uh, within the next sixty days and this will come back before council for a, a public hearing. Um, I understand everyone wants to be heard, um, so I'd like to give everybody who's on the line a chance to do that tonight. Um, but please know that you will have another chance. We've received a lot of emails today and again, I appreciate the passion and concern and I believe every one of us, um, among mayor and council, uh, appreciate that as well, please know we'll be taking a very close look at this. Um, uh, next on the line is Indira Dhanapati, Indira?
Yes, hello, um, so we live in two fifty-five Putting Green Lane, which is right behind the Caldwell Tree Service. And by the way, Mr. Caldwell, today is the first time I know your name and I'm looking at you, so I, I don't think we've met, okay? So I, I request that the, uh, variance be denied. And one of the reasons we bought our home was the privacy that it offered in our backyard. And currently we have a forty-foot buffer area, um, on one side with a few trees. It's not much of a barrier, but we hear the constant noise of trucks backing and boom of wooden logs being thrown into the chipper all day long. So we are already enduring a forty-foot buffer on one side. Now on top of this, you're proposing a high-density development so close to our property is an upfront. Also, the Hogwallow Creek lies on one side of our property and reducing the buffer right next to the, uh, stream to forty feet and the proposed retention pond will flood the creek and my property. So we are surprised that a variance would be allowed to any area near the creek. Such a high-density development right next to a residential area will destroy the character of my neighborhood, not to mention the property values. I hope the mayors and the council members will consider all of this and please do not recommend any variance in the one fifty feet. And please do not, um, break building codes, you know, building codes are there for a reason. Please, uh, let's follow the rules, they're all good tax-paying citizens and so let's just all follow rules here. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Dhanapati. Um, next on the line is Joetta Labandy. Not here, um, okay, thank you, uh, moving on to Pam Lattenbecker. I understand Pam is not on the line, no longer on the line. Um, Vanessa Tracy is no longer on the line as well, um, is she is? Okay, um, that's, Vanessa? Just to confirm me with IT, um, is Vanessa available? Okay, 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 um, actually, I understand Pam Lattenbecker is on the line, so Pam, would you like to go ahead?
Yes, ma'am, I'm here.
All right, thank you, Pam, you have the floor.
Thank you very much for, um, having me. I, um, I live at two fifty Putting Green Lane, I've been at this property for thirty-five years. Um, I worked for Howard Chatham, who was the developer of this property and many other properties around town, as you know. Um, I worked for him as a realtor. Um, I knew that this property across the road would eventually be commercial. Um, when I first moved out to Roswell, um, I was horseback riding, right on Crossville Road. Okay, we all know that's disappeared. Now, I found out about a meeting yesterday, um, after it was over. So, I'm a very curious person and I am an action person, I like to know what's going on firsthand, not what I hear. So I went down to look at Mr. Caldwell's property today and met him and I walked the property from front to back, side to side. We also went down to another project that, uh, I think is Providence Homes, uh, i- i- it's the Jolly Developers, beautiful property, um, and I wanted to get an idea of exactly what, you know, was going on. Now, I understand from the people that have spoken here tonight that their property backs up to that property, I am across the street. Now, neighbors have said, well, you'll get the lights, you'll get the noise, you'll get this and you'll get that. And I understand that, but I also know that, um, there's a wave of anger through the community, but I will tell you, there's misinformation out there. We need to have a community meeting with all the facts, not the yappers, but the facts. And not to make Steve Caldwell the scapegoat. Because the bottom line is, is he doesn't have to sell this property if he want, if he doesn't want to. He's the owner of it, he doesn't have to sell. You know, this is a, a, a matter that was, he was approached with and it's a great decision, it's going to upgrade this, it's not going to degrade everything that we have. I, I have to sit here and chuckle at a few of the people that are talking about variances and, and following the rules and let's deny, and those are the, those are the biggest rule breakers that live in here. So I, I just have to laugh at that, it's like, if there's a rule, we don't care, I'm doing this. Well, what happened right here? Well, somebody removed the buffer, it wasn't Steve Caldwell. Now, who is that, I know, and I'll be glad to disclose that, they know. So, I think the truth needs to get out there. Um, we can only deal in the facts and the truth. Change is going to come and it's here. That, when I bought this house, it was the last house in phase one. To the left of me was woods, deer running around, blah, blah, blah. Well, now, I'm at the last one and all, all down the street has the, has the underground utilities. Well, you know, I wish I did too, but I don't. I still love it here, this is a neighborhood of people who are like family, literally family. Um, I love these people, we have a couple of radicals in here and, you know, I just go ahead and do what I did. But, we need to have this meeting. Steve Caldwell has been the one person, this is, uh, this is shameful because he has given, given, you saw the mayor, you saw Matthew Judy walk out. Matthew Judy, I've known since he played football, Roswell High School, he and my son went to Georgia Tech together. They, you know, and his, h- his pa- his parents, we go back a long, long way. I know that Matthew has been to law school, he's a smart guy, he really is, he recused himself because he's a very ethical man. Lori Henry, she's a terrific mayor, so, you know, any sense of impropriety you will not find at the door of Steve Caldwell, it's just not gonna.
Thank you, Ms. Blackenbaker, Blackenbaker. Um, next on the line, I believe we have, uh, Ms. Sally McKenzie, is Sally? Thank you, Sally, go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me? You can hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Um, um, I'm going to shorten my remarks just because I, I'm very glad to hear that, um, Mr. Caldwell is interested in holding a neighborhood meeting. Um, I definitely believe the more people are involved, the better. Um, and so the only, the main point that I'd like to make tonight is just that, um, zoning laws are not intended to be a starting point for compromise. They are the local policeable regulations put into place to, to protect quality of life as the city plan and vision for redevelopment is implemented. That is the purpose of zoning laws. Um, so, going forward, uh, with this process, I just, uh, want to make sure that they are not considered the jumping off point for compromise. Um, that's not their, that's not their purpose. And I'll leave it at that because I'm looking forward to a community meeting and learning more about, um, the project, thank you.
Um, thank you, Ms. McKenzie. Um, next on the line, I believe we have, um, Doug Fernandez, is Mr. Fernandez on the line? Now, Mr. Fernandez is not. Um, next up, uh, Ms. Abby Satterfield, we have Abby Satterfield, um, Ms. Satterfield, would you like to go ahead?
Um, yes, are, are you there?
Yes, we can hear you, please go ahead.
Okay, um, I, uh, I originally came to Roswell in nineteen sixty, uh, None of this ever existed or anything. But getting to the point here, I do not believe in the approval of the reduced buffer to forty feet. We already hear, I live at two sixty Putting Green Lane, which is across the street from where the development is going to be done. So I do not back up to it. But we hear all the traffic already from Crossville Road all during the day, no matter what time. And so I just think that that would be too close to our properties. And we just heard about this in the last few days. Also, we had no idea that they were building townhomes and that they're proposing to three, three and a half stories high. And that's just, you know, it's a nice, quiet neighborhood, except for the street noise from out on Crossville Road. And we just don't believe in the buffer being moved closer than the one hundred and fifty feet. Thank you very much, and thank you for letting me talk.
Thank you, Ms. Satterfield. Appreciate that. Next up is Mr. Peter Corman. Peter, are you on the line? Yes, Mr. Corman, please go ahead.
My name is Peter Corman. I'm a resident in Horseshoe Bend on the east side of Roswell for over twenty-nine years. I'll just second what Sally McKenzie and Kelly Scully had said. I don't think and I won't support granting variances to our zoning codes, which set precedence for the rest of Roswell. So I don't agree with a forty-foot buffer, that variance. I don't agree with one foot below what the code sets. And I want our city council and our mayor to understand that. The variances you grant against our codes today will ripple far into the future. And this is not what we want in East Roswell, on the other side of four hundred, in West Roswell, or anywhere in Roswell. If we're going to have codes, let's stick to them. There's no hardship here that I have seen. I'll be at the community meeting, even though it is miles from my home, because the decisions you make in one part of the city will ripple across the entire city. Even though this is not in my backyard, the codes have affected us here. And I've heard in other projects, when a city attorney has recommended saying, we've given a variance there, we can't refuse it on the next person that requests it. So we will follow this from East Roswell to make sure that our city council sticks to the codes and sticks to the law. That's why we moved here to Roswell. Those are our expectations, and that's how we'll move forward. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Corman. One other person you, I think, maybe on the line is Patricia Fillion. No, no, Fillion is not on the line. Before, I want to bring this back to council, and thank you, members of public, for staying up tonight and joining us. We do have a motion on the floor for a sixty-day deferral that will include a neighborhood meeting coordinated by ComDev. And we have a second. I'd like to call for a vote as soon as possible, because it's getting late. We have a lot of items to go. Are there any other comments from council, or are we ready to vote? I see no hands up. All in favor of the motion, please raise your hand. And that is unanimous. And thank you very much. At this point, can we take a five-minute recess, please?
Sure.
Thank you all for coming back, and I will turn this back over to Community Development Department Councilmember Hall.
Thank you, Mayor Henry. Item number six, Approval of a Metropolitan River Protection Act Certificate, RC two zero one seven zero zero nine four eight for three twenty-three, three twenty-nine, and three thirty-five Jones Drive to consider an issuance of a certificate within the Chattahoochee River Corridor.
Let me share my screen here in just a second, and I'll get it started. So this is the Metropolitan River Corridor Protecting Act, River Corridor twenty seventeen zero zero nine four eight, located at three twenty-three, three twenty-nine, and three thirty-five Jones Drive. This is the aerial, this is the area of the property. The property is currently Zoned OP Office Park. It has been zoned office since nineteen eighty-five. This is the plan that was seen by the ARC, Atlanta Regional Commission. These are the numbers. So let me go to my next screen to explain this. So a site plan is used to show the ARC so that the vulnerability numbers can be seen for clearing and a purpose can be determined. So based back here on the screen I have here, these are the vulnerability numbers that are reviewed and approved by the Atlanta Regional Commission. So a site plan is used by an applicant so that it can help determine the numbers that the ARC looks at. And all the ARC does is approve the numbers for impervious and clearing amounts. So what the applicant is requesting this evening is approval of the vulnerability numbers for the clearing impervious amounts on the property. ARC found the numbers to be consistent, as stated here, as listed on the final finding. Staff does recommend approval for the clearing impervious numbers only. We knock the site plan. Do you have any questions for staff?
Councilmember Judy.
So, Ms. Diebel, just making sure here. We are not approving a site plan tonight or rezoning or anything. All we are approving tonight is the numbers that ARC approved to be safe with, for the Metropolitan River Protection Act.
That is correct. What you're approving tonight are the vulnerability category numbers that were found consistent by the Atlanta Regional Commission.
So we are not saying that this site plan can be built there or rezoning this. We're just looking at the MRP numbers.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Councilmember Palermo.
So if this is approved tonight, is there anything that is able to, or what's able to be built without council approval and public input?
So the property is Zoned Office Park. So if someone wanted to come in and bring a plan before the design review board for offices, they would be able to go straight through and go to design review board and then into permitting. But as stated, they'd have to meet the impervious and clearing numbers that are on there. So as long as they meet the numbers or are less than what the numbers are on there for their office plan, anything that is zoned and allowed under the Office Park zoning would be allowed to go on this property.
And then a follow-up question I have, and I'm not sure if it's for you or for Ms. Bromberg, but if I was correct on which property it was, it seemed to me like there was some grading aspects that just have some interesting parts. And I just want to make, I just want to get verification. We had passed a law and updated the code probably by now, four to five years ago, which was basically if a retaining wall was above a certain height, then it required council approval. And I just want to understand if that's, if that would be applicable here or not.
Yes, it would be applicable here. That's section ten point five of the UDC, and this is a non-single-family use. So if there was a retaining wall that was greater than or equal to six feet in height, it would come to council for approval.
Thank you.
Additional comments from council? Councilmembers of Pata.
Thank you, Mayor Henry. So we're all discussing anything here about the topography and the soil of the three parcels?
So.
On water management and the implication that it may have on storm water management?
So at this point in the process, councilmembers of Pata, the discussion about the stormwater concept is not required. This is just purely in order for the ARC to review the amount of impervious area or the amount of clearing that they would allow on the property because of the river corridor. So before the next step in the process could be completed, which would be to, for example, as Jackie Diebel said, if someone were to come in under the current zoning to propose an office building on this site, they would be required at their application for design review board to meet all of the requirements, including the UDC, including a stormwater concept at that time. So it's not required at this step in the process, but it is required before they can move on in the process towards developing the property.
Councilmember Zapata.
Thank you, Mayor. So this council will have opportunity in the future to examine in detail the implication of stormwater management, given the topography and the soil of the property.
If the developer of this property were to come in for anything that is allowed by right in an Office Park zoning, then it would not come before council. The only thing that would come before council would be if there's a retaining wall that is greater than six feet, then council would review those retaining walls. So the topography and the stormwater are not things that would come to council unless there was some other change in zoning or condition on the property that required that item to come before council.
Additional comments, questions for staff? Okay, I'd like to hear from the applicants.
Jerry Wood here. I recently spoke with Dmitry Kazakov, manager of USBS. I presume he'll step in. I was, I'm just here as advice and counsel. If the council has any questions while we're waiting for Dmitry, I can answer those. But I think staff has presented the issue very well to the council, and I really have nothing to add.
Well, thank you. We'll reserve time for rebuttal. We've got one person in the public that would like to speak.
Sorry, Dmitry, sorry. I just got it.
Okay, before I go to the public, would you like to speak?
No, everything is clear.
Okay. So I would like to hear from a Mr. Drew Givens. It looks like he's dropped off the call, so I'll bring this back to council. Does council have any questions from the applicant? Yes, councilmember Zapata.
Thank you, Mayor. So I just want to note is that we do, we did receive mayor and council an email from a resident and taxpayer, Janet Russell, who has, you know, trouble to connect to Zoom, and it's hard for her to get engaged in Zoom meetings. So she wrote to us an email with some comments. I wonder, Mayor, if you're going to be reading those comments, since the resident taxpayer has difficulties to connect with Zoom and submit the comments other than email mayor and council.
Please go ahead and read the comments, if you'd like to.
Okay, thank you, Mayor. So the comments from Janet Russell, Monday, February eighth, two twenty, twenty twenty-one, Jones Drive project is up for your consideration. I wish each of you had taken the time to actually walk the property. If you had then these remarks, we will not inform you, but if you didn't, please read. One, the current zoning was imposed in nineteen eighty-five. Think about that. Why has the city not reviewed this zoning? A lot has changed in thirty-six years. The protection of our river corridor is even more pertinent today than ever. Number two, the property currently has two homes from the nineteen forty slash fifty, less than seven hundred square feet each. Three, the property is at the crest of a steep ridge. Four, the property slopes straight down on all sides. With all of the heavy rains, the flooding has increased exponentially, and this is with previous surface. Five, if you stand on warm spring circle and look up from the central make collection kiosk, you will understand the enormity of this project. There is a solid wall of granite, maybe sixty foot high. Six, to make foundations for any buildings would involve blasting through this granite. Seven, Jones Drive is approximately twenty feet wide and has no curve. Seven, again, for the blasting to be successful, it will involve huge tonnage, and this will damage the foundation of the homes on Jones and Willow Springs, as well as River Walk and below. Eight, I am giving you public notice that if one foundation of any residence or office or commercial property is damaged, there will be a class action lawsuit filed against the city by the property owners. This is an official notice and to be read into the public record. Janet Idago Russell, Roswell resident and property owner since nineteen seventy-three.
Councilmember Judy.
Ms. Diebel, once again, we are just looking at MRP numbers here. We are not looking at any projects, no blasting, no anything. We are looking at the ARC MRP numbers, period.
That is correct.
Thank you.
Additional, yes, councilmember Hall.
Thank you, Ms. Diebel. I do have a question. So would any development that was proposed here, I mean, it is Zoned for Office Park, have to get this certificate in order to be developed?
No, if the numbers, once the numbers have been approved by ARC and then approved again by council, as long as they follow these numbers, then they're good. They don't have to go back to the Atlanta Regional Commission.
Yes, any development that wanted to come on this property, councilmember Hall, it is required to have approval from ARC of those numbers. So yes, you are correct.
So you're correct, but yes. He went through the process, and it's, this is taking care of it.
Thank you.
Additional questions, comments? And councilmember Hall, do I have a motion?
Yes, Mayor, I'm ready to make a motion. Motion for approval of item number six, Approval of a Metropolitan River Protection Act Certificate, RC twenty seventeen zero zero nine four eight, three twenty-three, three twenty-nine, and three thirty-five Jones Drive to consider an issuance of a certificate within the Chattahoochee River Corridor.
We've got a motion. Do we have a second? Second by councilmember Judy. Although some favorite, please raise your hands. And it passes unanimously. Thank you. Onto the next item, councilmember Hall.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number seven, Approval of a text amendment to the Unified Development Code, UDC, Section nine dot six dot five, Vehicle Service and Repair, Letter B, Car Wash. This is the first reading.
Mr. Davidson.
Thank you. This is an ordinance to amend the Unified Development Code by modifying Article nine, Section nine point six point five, Vehicle Service and Repair, Letter B, Car Wash. Now, therefore, the mayor and council of the city of Roswell, Georgia, pursuant to their authority, you hereby amend Article nine, Section nine point six point five, Vehicle Service and Repair, Letter B, Car Wash. pursuant to their authority, you hereby amend Article 9 use provisions of Unified Development Code, the text of which is incorporated herein by reference. And I approve this to be the first reading.
Council have any questions? Staff?
Okay, so this is the first reading for Section 9.6.5 Vehicle Service and Repair, Letter B, Car Wash. You can see the changes are listed shown here mainly in red with some straight throughs in, on the black there. So removing the ground floor in letter A, adding, removing abutting in letter B and putting it next door to residential, removing the ground floor in that one, removing abutting in letter C and adding next door to, and removing ground floor. And then letters D, E, and F are new. These are all the comments that we received at committee and have been brought forward. Plenary Commission recommended approval with no changes. Staff recommends approval of the first reading.
Comments, questions from council? Do I have a motion?
Yes, Mayor. I make a motion for the approval of item number seven, approval of the text amendment to the Unified Development Code, UDC, Section 9.6.5 Vehicle Service and Repair, Letter B, Car Wash.
Thank you. We've got a motion by councilmember Hall. Councilmember Zapata, is that a second?
Yes.
All those in favor, please raise your hands. And it passes unanimously. Next, we will get on to the Transportation Department. Councilmember Tizer?
Thank you, Mayor. Item number eight is the approval, excuse me, of Roswell's position with respect to a November 2021 referendum for renewal of the transportation special purpose local option sales tax, T-SPOS.
Thank you, councilmember Tizer. Good evening, Mayor and council. So just some quick background on the item. So the first ever transportation SPOS was approved by voters in November 2016 by the Fulton County residents for, for five years. There's a list of the tier one T-SPOS projects we have been working on. We have made good, above-average progress on these projects compared to other cities in the county. And the collection stops in March 2020. So that's next year, 12 months from now. And for an uninterrupted collection, it has to go to a public referendum and pass in November 2021. So Fulton County had recently reached out to the cities to get their guidance and get their position from all the cities in Fulton County, excluding the city of Atlanta, about their position on the renewal of T-SPOS for another five years. The specific questions from the Fulton County were if the cities want a renewal, if the cities want the renewal to be on the ballot in November 2021, and if the cities wanted a transit to become a part of the T-SPOS. So here are the three options that were suggested by Fulton County. So the option 3A was the continuation of the, of the current arrangement, which is three quarters of a penny with no transit. Option 3B was, again, continuation of the three quarters of a penny, including transit. So that would leave less funds for surface transportation projects. And when they say transit, they are talking about the bus rapid transit in the future express lanes to be constructed by GDOT along Georgia, along Georgia 4. It was a quarter of an increase in the overall T-SPOS, including transit. So the next slide is about, so the Fulton County's request was discussed in Roswell at the Transportation Committee a couple of weeks ago on January 27th. And the committee supported option 3A, which is continuation of the current arrangement for November 2021 referendum, but not to include the transit. But the committee also supported transit. And a suggestion was made to have a separate referendum on the ballot for transit at the same time in November 2021 or at a later date. So that was the Roswell Transportation Committee's guidance a couple of weeks ago. So there was also an all Fulton County mayor's meeting on Friday, February 5th, just a couple of days ago, where Mayor Henry stated the city's position. And outcome of the overall meeting was majority of the cities, they also supported option 3A, just continuation of three quarters of a penny without transit. City of Johns Creek did not support any option at this time. One of the South Fulton cities had not have a decision yet. And two of the South Fulton cities supported option 3B, which is the increase of quarter of a penny, so a full penny with transit. Generally, the cities, the support transit, but some thought that the timing is not right. Some thought there is more planning that is, that is needed. So based on that input, since the majority of cities supported, Fulton County is moving forward to put option 3A on the ballot in November 2021 election. So the next steps would be, so staff has been working. We'll bring an item at the February committee meeting in a couple of weeks and request your guidance on a public involvement plan that we have been working on for the past few weeks. And we'll also request your general guidance on the project selection. And then May to March, we have pretty strict schedule on this one. This schedule comes from the county. So March to May, we'll just do some heavy public involvement. What kind of, what projects the public would want to see on the, on the project list and residents' input on staff suggested projects. So in June, there must be a project list approved by all cities. And in July, the county would want to execute the IGA with all 14 cities. And then August to October would be, again, you know, public outreach, mostly for education of the public on the approved project list. And then in November 2nd, 2021 is the day of, of the election. So that's all I had on that item. Are there, is there any questions I can answer?
Council have any questions? Councilmember Judy?
Yeah, real quick, Mohammed. So basically, since this council came away with wanting to include transit, we're just out of luck. Fulton County just decided that's going 3A and figure it out yourself?
Yes, so basically based on the majority of the cities' input, the county is saying that at this point, if we want to go to the November 2021 election, 3A is really the only option. Like I said, you know, generally the cities, they support transit. It's just a timing issue or some need, some more planning efforts on the transit piece. So it's, it's not dead, but it'll, it'll be back maybe at a later referendum.
Well, I'm a little concerned about that seeing as we just voted on a project that included BRT at Holcomb Bridge. And we aren't going to have the opportunity to see that through right now. So that's a little concerning to me. I don't know what we can do about it, if anything. But I just want to go on record saying that's a little bit concerning because that was a lot of the reason why, you know, this council wanted to go through with rebuilding Holcomb Bridge.
So, yeah, if I could clarify that. So yes, we, we made part, you know, part of the project at the interchange rebuild at Holcomb Bridge. GDOT has the funding as part of their express lanes project to accommodate a future BRT station. So they are not precluding, our interchange reconstruction will not preclude future implementation of BRT station and of course, the future operation. There was a very lengthy discussion at the all mayor's meeting where, you know, points were made that, you know, to seek federal funds or the remaining funds to make BRT operational, there's got to be some local commitment. There's got to be some local funding that needs to come before the county could go to the feds and ask for more money. They had GDOT, the commissioner, and the ATL, you know, the head person there on the call. They all spoke, they all made their points. There was an AJC article today that I can forward to the council later today that talks about all the details. So, you know, it was a good conversation on that. But at this point, it didn't look like that majority of the cities are in favor of moving forward the transit at this point.
Councilmember Palermo?
Thank you, Mayor Henry. So, Mr. Ralph, I just want to get clarification. So basically, this, this council committee came up with, with our preference, which was 3A with a separate transit referendum on the, on the ballot. And, and so the request tonight is for us to just officially motion to approve that as our position and, and the support for the renewal, knowing that the results are, are, that basically, that basically Fulton will be moving, moving forward without having both separate votes. I just want to make sure I understand kind of what their, what the request is and recommend, and staff recommendation in the, in the item.
Yes, so at, at the committee, the committee agreed to move forward with 3A. They wanted to keep it separate, which was a good call. Because, you know, another concern from many of the cities were if you mix the transit piece with the surface transportation piece, you know, they, not, not everybody likes transit. So they just didn't want to have any opportunity there for it, for the referendum to fail just because transit was attached to it. So that's why it's just moving forward by itself. But like I said, you know, it's, it could go forward at a later date.
Well, I guess just help me understand why or what the purpose of this official motion is, if it's already been discussed. Because, yeah, ultimately, as I said at that committee, you know, I understand we, we can't control what Fulton County does. All we can do is vote on what's our intent and what's our preference, which is what we did at that committee. And, and so certainly I don't mind just repeating that vote tonight. But I guess just help me understand what's, what's the benefit or the official purpose of this vote tonight?
This is just a, a formal approval at a city council meeting of what the committee approved a couple of weeks ago. And, yep, that, that, that's all it is. It's just a timing issue that the all mayor's Fulton County meeting was held last Friday, just a couple of days ago. So we needed that decision, needed that guidance for Mayor Henry to state city's position at that meeting. So that part is already done. This is just a formal approval of city's position on how they want to move forward.
Councilmember Tizer?
Thank you. There's a, let me show you. There's a question for either Mr. Davidson or for you, Mayor Henry. I believe there's some issue related to having two referendum, these referendum items on the same ballot. Can't remember which one of you might have mentioned that to me.
Well, and, and I can go through it because I did present several options. If you remember, councilmember Zapata wanted a question that was based on a yes/no answer to get to the next screen. It, I've been told that that is not legal. And it's kind of gerrymandering, I don't know if that's the right word, the ballot process. So that is not an option at all. But in order to put two separate referendum items on the same ballot would cause legislation to have to happen in order to do that. So what I would propose is that today, we just, we say that we're supportive of 3A and that we're also supportive of a separate item on the ballot, whether it's this ballot, the next ballot on transit. I can tell you it won't be this ballot because there was absolutely no support for it. But I think that if we make the statement that the city of Roswell does support transit and we would like to see it on, on the ballot in the future time, I think that that would be very appropriate. Do you agree, Mr. Ralph?
Yes, Mayor, absolutely.
Councilmember Zapata?
Thank you, Mayor. So what was the reasoning during the discussion of not having two different lines? One for 0.75%, or 0.25% for transit? And let the voters decide? You know, I, I understand the 3C option, having all bundled up is hard because, but then if you open up in two lines, in two different votes on the same ballot this November 2021, what was the reasoning of this group of people to decide not to give the, the voters the, the options to vote in two different topics, two different percentage of the, of the T-SPOS?
So. I'll let, go ahead, Mohammed.
Sorry, Mayor, I was just going to say that, you know, this is, Mayor Henry clearly stated city's suggestion at the meeting, but there were not enough other cities who were thinking on the same line. So they're just not ready for the transit to go to a referendum, at least not in November 2021.
So what were the arguments then? Do you remember what was the argument that these people used not to have two different lines to vote on this, on the same ballot this November?
I guess since there was not much support for the idea, for the transit idea for November 2021, it wasn't discussed in that much detail whether it's okay to have two ballots or not. There was just not much interest for the transit at this point.
Okay, and I have a question for legal. Well, maybe wait for a second. So, you know, my question for legal is, can Roswell has this option on the ballot for the Roswell voters only? Or that would be illegal?
No, this is a Fulton County ballot question. So it would require the Fulton, Fulton County Commission to do it.
So Roswell cannot ask this question to the own voters?
No, they can't.
Councilmember Palermo?
Thank you, Mayor Henry. So I, I completely understand that, that, that we certainly cannot control Fulton County and each city certainly deserves to, to, to make their voice, their vote. And so I have, I have, I have no concern or issue with that. At, at the same time, really what I'm focused on tonight is just what is, what is Roswell's preference? Again, I think it sounded unanimous that, that, that everyone wanted the, the option for the renewal to be on the ballot. And again, my, my personal philosophy is, is anytime we can have the residents decide instead of, instead of, instead of us, that's, that's a good thing. So, so ultimately, I still, I still would like to just have our official position be that this November, we have the two separate lines. I realize that's, that's not going to, that's not what Fulton County is going to do. It's just, I'm not going to change my vote based on what I think Fulton County is going to do. Just as, just as South Fulton, they went with 3C. I disagree with 3C, I wouldn't support it. I don't like that bundled approach. But they, they voted for, for their preference. And, and I, that's certainly what I want to do tonight as well.
For Tizer?
I just want to ask the question one more time to make sure I understand it. Is it or is it not legal? Is it or is it, does it or does it not require separate state legislation to have the two items on the same ballot? This is, this is a bit of confusion.
Yes, it does. Requires state legislation.
So it's, so we can state our preference, but at this point, the only thing that can legally go on the ballot would be 3A? Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank, thank you, guys. Just one other thing, and I'm fine with stating our position as we'd like to have, you know, a separate transit. But I do have respect for state law here. And I, you know, don't think, from what I'm hearing, that that's possible.
Councilmember Palermo?
It was my understanding that the aspect that needed state law, legislation, was not having two things on a ballot. Certainly, certainly having a yes/no and a new window, that, that would be a, that would be against the law and require a law change. But, but for just having two separate questions, do you support 0.75%? Yes or no? Do you support 0.25%? Yes or no? It was my understanding that that's legal. The aspect I believe that, or I, I guess I, I believed was what required state legislation was the fact that in the, in the packet, packet page 148. was the fact that, um, in the, in the packet, packet page one forty-eight, it mentions that three C, which is what some of the other cities chose as their favorite, it seeks legislative amendment, uh, due to the fact that it's an increase from the point seven-five. So I thought that was the aspect that requires it, and that's why there was the four B versus the four A. And again, I'm opposed to three C because I don't like bundled, but my preference is we say, here's our preference. Our preference is, is three A with a separate one of the point two-five. And at the end of the day, I have, I, I, I completely understand the, uh, state legislative, uh, branch is not gonna change a law just for a, uh, for a few cities. But again, that's, I, I would prefer to give the choice to the voters over us making the decision for them.
That, that's correct on needing a legislation change for item three C. Rob, do you have something to add?
I was gonna confirm, uh, what Councilmember Palermo just said. Uh, the legislative portion of this is the exceeding point seven-five, regardless of whether it's bundled or separate votes. Exceeding point seven-five requires a legislative change.
Councilmember Tyser.
Now I'm confused. Mayor Henry, can you help me, please?
Well, it was my understanding when I asked the direct question, can we have two items on the ballot? I was told that would take a legislative change, period. Which I'm, I'm not saying we shouldn't give our position, but I was told that because there would have to be a legislative change to have two ballot questions.
The state law that authorizes this has one question that's authorized to be on the referendum. If you want two questions, they would have to change the state law to put this, a second question in there. Currently, you're authorized, there's one question that's authorized. Now, it, it could include different things. And the question is show additional sales tax of whatever the rate is, be collected for a period of so many years, and the portion of Fulton County outside the city of Atlanta for the first purpose of blank. So it can be transit, it can be transportation projects, it can be whatever you put in there. But that's the one question that is authorized by statute right now.
Councilmember Wilson.
Um, thank you, Mayor. And the, the way that I look at it, we have basically two choices, three. But from what I'm hearing, everyone would like to show our support for a separate transit refer- referendum. Um, you know, either the way that it's written, that we support option A on the November twenty twenty-one ballot with a separate transit referendum at a date to be determined. I just wanted to throw that out and see if that might be acceptable as counsel because it, you know, presents our position, um, accepting the, the three A consideration. Um, and also emphasizes the fact that we would like, that we would support a transit referendum in the future.
Councilmember Palermo.
I, I prefer it as written on, uh, that we, that we decided at, at committee and it's, it's in the packet, which is, I, uh, packet page, package page forty-five, I'm sorry, one forty-five, which just says on the same ballot. Again, you know, as I mentioned, I'm not expecting, I'm not expecting legis, the legislative branch to change the law. I'm not expecting the majority of Fulton County to change their mind. I'm just, I'm just saying, I'd rather show, I think it should be all together. I think voters should get to choose, not, not us. But again, I think if they see it, we're putting it, we're saying our preference is November twenty twenty-one, they're probably gonna realize that if that doesn't happen, we're, we're certainly open to discussion in the future as well.
Councilmember Zapata.
Thank you, Mayor. So, so if I understood correctly from Mr. DeRoz, the problem is like the legislation only approved up to seventy-five, point seventy-five percent. So we're, there is no legislation that will support a one percent either bundled or separate. I understood correctly.
So what Mr. Davidson said, uh, two minutes ago is correct with the addition that uh, either two ballot questions or exceeding point seven-five, both would require legislative change.
Okay, so you can have, you can have three C then with, um, one percent in one question?
Uh, three C exceeds point seven-five, therefore three C would require legislative change.
Okay, so then, um, with other legislation change, what was this presented to us here today? Then was not an option that we can decide on because, uh, we don't have direct, direct influence on, uh, state legislation. So what was three C presented then as an option when there's only legislation today, right now, that support more than point seventy-five percent?
So Mohammed, I would recommend going back to your slide provided by Fulton County where, where the guidance from Fulton County at the time, uh, month or two ago was if the majority of the cities supported three C, then Fulton County would be going to our legislature and seeking that modification.
Yeah, I think that is correct, uh, Councilmember Zapata. If you go back here, if majority of the cities had stated their position on Friday, February fifth, that they want to move forward with three C, uh, that included a legislation change, then the county was willing to go through that process. It's just that the majority of the cities, they just supported, uh, option three A. Uh, the county is not dictating anything here. County is just moving forward with, with what majority of the cities are supporting here.
Councilmember Palermo.
Thank you, Mayor Henry. So I, I know we discussed this at, you know, at length at committee and, and I felt we ended up at a good spot, which is, which is right here from the committee slash staff recommendation. So again, I, I just request, uh, uh, Councilman Tyser, consider, you know, just, uh, um, really supporting it as, as we decided at committee and just frankly, end the conversation. We know it's not going to change Fulton, but at least, at least we've shown we want the voters to get to get the choices, not us, um, in, instead of the, this long discussion.
Councilmember Tyser.
Well, let me be clear, I'm not arguing, uh, what, you know, what we should do. I'm just trying to get a clarification as to something that I was told, uh, was the case. And so with that, if this, if the will of this council is, uh, and I would agree to it, that we would like to see the point seven-five or three A uh, on the ballot in November. And if possible, we would also like to see uh, a point two oh, because I think it's point two oh that has been approved by the legislator, legislature, that point two five would need to go back. And so, uh, we'd like to see a point two oh, uh, uh, as a separate item. I'm fine with that concept. Uh, I just, I just wanted to make sure that what we were doing, uh, was, was, you know, was something that was legal. So that, 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 that's fine. I'm not arguing the process at all, or the problem at all. So if, uh, if we want to keep talking about it, that's fine. If we want to make a motion, I'm prepared at any time.
Councilmember Zapata.
Thank you, Mayor. Well, you know, I, I understand. So, but I just want to leave on a, on public record, my disappointment with the, the group of people, or was all elected officials or not, uh, in the other cities on Fulton County who unilaterally decided, uh, not to be very democratic and let the voters to choose between the two options. So I just want to state this on public record, very, very disappointed that not let the people vote on, uh, the two options on two different lines on the same ballot on this November.
Councilmember Tyser, do you have a motion?
I do. My motion would be that it is the, uh, desire of this council to, uh, see the point seven-five uh, renewal of the T-Spot, um, tax on the November twenty twenty-one ballot. And if, and, and that we would also like to see a point two oh, uh, transit, uh, initiative on the ballot also.
Back in.
As I said, let me just be clear, as a separate item, uh, if that is possible.
We've got a motion by Councilmember Tyser, second by Councilmember Palermo. All those in favor, please raise your hands. And it passes unanimously. Thank you. Back to you, Councilmember Tyser.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Let's see, uh, item number nine. Approval of a text amendment to the Unified Development Code to modify section eleven point four point one six, uh, point A regarding the applicability of sidewalks in forced repair situations. And this is a first reading.
Mr. Davidson.
Thank you. This is an ordinance to amend the Unified Development Code by modifying section eleven point four Streets. Now, therefore, the mayor and council of the city of Roswell, Georgia, pursuant to their authority, do hereby amend section eleven point four Streets, eleven point four point one six, existing streets, letter A, applicability number one as follows. Text of which is incorporated herein by reference. Nevermind, this is the first reading.
Mr. DeRoz.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, good evening, everyone. I'm going to try and be brief on this, uh, given the time, and you've seen this before. Background on this item, uh, this started its initiation several months ago. Uh, staff has been coordinating with, uh, community development staff and legal, uh, for many years uh, on, on situations where a natural disaster, uh, sinkhole, a fire, a flood, uh, is triggered that a property needs to make repairs or improvements to that building, uh, based on the natural disaster happening. And we wrestle with the issue of whether a construction or sidewalk or the assessment of a fee is applicable on the parcel in question. Uh, we initiated this with you back in, uh, uh, December, I believe. Uh, the language you supported is shown on this slide. Um, the red text is what's added to the section A. Uh, basically what we wanted to, what, what you wanted to do, uh, in December was insert language so that the current owner, if they experience a fire or natural disaster, is allowed to renovate, repair, or reconstruct the building that was damaged, uh, provided there is no gross, uh, increase in gross floor area or improved site area. And, uh, the construction of a sidewalk and the, or the assessment of the fee for sidewalk uh, would be completely waived in those situations. Uh, we took that language and we brought it to Planning Commission, uh, last month. And I'll show you the language that they approved unanimously instead. Uh, there was a lot of discussion at Planning Commission about blight and wanting to make sure that we're not penalizing a person who happens to, uh, purchase a property and wasn't the current owner when the natural disaster happened, but it's something that they want to fix up. Um, there was also a very large discussion about the natural disaster provision itself and whether we should be trying to, um, allow, uh, more, uh, basically open up the net and allow more parcels to come in and not have that sidewalk requirement and not have a fee requirement. Uh, and they should be able to, uh, demo a structure for whatever reason and be able to reconstruct it without a sidewalk requirement, uh, coming up. Our recommendation for you tonight, uh, given that this has been advertised and initiated as a forced repair discussion, uh, staff recommends we stick with the current language as you initiated back in December. Um, staff's position on the Planning Commission's language, uh, is that it would significantly change, uh, the number of uh, sidewalks that are built in our city. It would significantly change the number of parcels that we're accepting fee for. And it's a, it's, it's a, it's a discussion we'd like to hear your input on, but it's not something that we would necessarily support. Uh, just because we feel that it would be going against one of your strategic goals being a people-focused multimodal transportation system. Uh, we feel it is, uh, ultimately going in the wrong direction. And it does not match the intent of the forced repair discussion that we've advertised and started that process back in December. Uh, that concludes my presentation. I'm open to questions.
Council, any questions? Seeing no hands up, uh, and we don't have a, anyone in the public that would like to speak, do I have a motion?
Excuse me, um, yeah, um, I'll move to approve item number nine. Um, the, uh, version that has been approved by staff.
We've got a motion by Councilmember Tyser. Do we have a second? Second by Councilmember Judy. All those in favor, please raise your hands. And it passes unanimously. Thank you.
Thank you.
Back to you, Councilmember Tyser.
Item number ten, approval to modify the scoring criteria of the sidewalk program policy to prioritize sidewalk projects within the city of Roswell.
Mr. Cox.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'm aware of the lateness of the hour, so I promise I will be extremely brief. This is something you guys have seen before on the sidewalk matrix and our scoring criteria modification. And why is this not? Uh, to give a quick recap, five years ago, the staff generated a large inventory of all the sidewalk gaps throughout the city on collector and arterial roadways. And at the same time, after a lot of feedback and guidance from the mayor and council then, we developed a scoring criteria to rank and prioritize them. Uh, the ultimate goal at that time was to come up with a data-driven process to come up and, uh, as a way to, you know, head off some other factors in how we rank and score them. The two thousand nineteen Bicycle and Pedestrian Master Plan took another look at this uh, and came up with several recommendations that we have discussed with you, uh, at previous committee meetings over the past several months, uh, in August, in October, as well as, uh, this past January. And at the January twenty-seventh meeting, uh, there was a motion made to bring this forward to tonight's agenda. Uh, there was one caveat that we revisit, um, staff revisit some of the scoring metrics on one of the criteria, which was the cost of projects. And I will show you that again in just a moment. Uh, just a quick recap of what we've got to at this point over the past several months. Uh, there were eight original criteria from five years ago. And as, as of now, we are keeping three of the criteria unchanged. We're gonna leave them as is. Uh, that is the, uh, speed of vehicular traffic, uh, the desire path, which is kind of commonly called the cattle trail or goat trail you see on the side of the road in the grass, which is a evidence of pedestrian demand. And also if the sidewalk gap is on the hub and spoke trail system, which was approved in our bike pit plan. We're also recommending modifying five of the existing criteria. Uh, the first one being a safety factor, we're replacing it or substituting in, uh, traffic volumes. And that was a comment we received from the mayor and council in August to use another data metric and utilize our traffic volumes, uh, in a better way. Uh, we also got some good feedback to increase points on our schools and parks to give more weight to, uh, sidewalk gaps that improve our access to schools and parks. We also are merging, um, our transit, our MARTA bus stops in with our commercial walk-up business, uh, criteria. Uh, the primary reason for that was that our MARTA bus routes mirror our commercial corridors on, on routes like Highway nine and Holcomb Bridge and Mansell Road. Uh, so we've kind of combined those into one element. Also, we are increasing points for sidewalk gaps, uh, if it's on a busy road and there's a sidewalk on the opposite side of the street. Uh, this was mainly due to public input we received during the bike pit plan. Uh, we had several comments on, I have a sidewalk gap in front of my residence, but there's a sidewalk across the street, but I can't reach it. It's, it's unsafe to cross the road, uh, on many portions of the day. Uh, so we're just doing a minor, uh, tweak here to, uh, make sure sidewalk gaps aren't inadvertently getting penalized. And then lastly, there were two new criteria that we are proposing adding. One of them is population density, uh, based on the, uh, census block data, looking at, uh, smaller areas of Roswell versus the larger ones. Uh, the idea being there's more people, there's more demand and likely more benefit. Uh, and then also project costs are being factored in, uh, basically on projects that are under three hundred thousand, uh, would receive a few extra points. And then if project cost is below a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, it would get, uh, additional points. And I will show you a graphic, uh, showing all the criteria. Uh, the changes that are being proposed are in blue, uh, whereas the previous numbers are in black text or in parentheses. Uh, you can see at the top, we're adding in the traffic volumes and increasing some of the points there. Uh, we're also doubling the points for schools and parks. Uh, we added in the MARTA bus stops with the commercial development, uh, the proximity criteria for commercial development being merged with MARTA. And we are also, uh, adding the, um, the small correction on, uh, adding points if the sidewalk gap is on a busier road and there's there's a sidewalk across the street from it. That three points there in the middle of the asterisk would get bumped up to five in those, in those cases. And at the bottom, the population density is new, along with the cost of projects. And then the one thing I wanted to make very clear and point out from the committee meeting twelve days ago, those points totals were, I believe, fifteen points and eight. We have, at staff level, reduced those down to ten and five to be more consistent with the other figures you see above. So just in closing, I'll yield to questions, and we can put this, if it's approved tonight, we can put this out on the website and update our policy. And then also, just as a kind of standing reminder, staff are continuing to update project cost estimates on our sidewalks. We do this continuously based on market data and the bids we receive. And then also, some of our sidewalks, we need to update the estimates on because the UDC or the bike-ped plan has since increased their width. Previously, although the cost estimates were assuming a five-foot-wide sidewalk, the, some of those sidewalks have been recommended to bump up to six feet or ten feet, so staff are working to update those estimates. So that's something that's kind of ongoing. But with that, I will, I will yield to questions from the council. Thank you.
Councilmember Palermo.
Thank you, Mayor Henry, and thank you, Mr. Cox. Again, I definitely appreciate all, all that you're, you're doing for our sidewalk goals. Basically, I, I am glad that you reduced the, the cost one from fifteen and eight down to ten and five. I still do feel that, that it's, that it's too high and getting too high of a weighting, so I, I'd feel more comfortable with a five-three like the other ones, because frankly, I, I don't think a low cost makes it twice as more valuable as having no sidewalk on the other street or population density and things like that. So I, that's, that's where I feel like they should be aligned and not, not double the points for that lower cost, because otherwise, I feel some lower priority ones are going to get skewed and go ahead of some higher priority ones, you know, even, even though population density and, and no sidewalk on either side are all very relevant.
Any questions from council? Councilmember Hall.
I, I agree with what Councilmember Palermo said. A five and a three there just seem, seem more appropriate in, in my mind.
Additional comments, questions from council? Yes, Councilmember Tyser.
Thank you, Mayor. I've not been a particular fan of the lower-cost concept either. You know, we've got some, I don't know, forty-eight million dollars worth of sidewalks, and we're either going to find a way to fund them or not. I am curious to see, Dave, what the, the list looks like when you put these rules into effect. You know, I think some people will not, probably not be very happy to see their particular sidewalk project way down on the list, as, you know, as, as we've seen in some other cases, but I'd really, really interested to see what happens to the list with these sort of rules.
Councilmember Zapata.
Thank you, Mayor Henry. Yeah, I, I could support on cost of project moving from ten points to five points, and from five points to three points, I could support that.
Additional comments from council? We've got one person in the public that would like to speak. Is Mr. Jason Yow available?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
There, there's a criteria that, that never seems to, to make it into your list, and for lack of a better term, I'd call it net aggregate connectivity. You, you never seem to look at the existing sidewalk network and what it would take, what the bigger bang for the buck is in terms of the pieces that you connect to the existing sidewalk network. And a great example is Pine Grove Road. Pine Grove Road doesn't need a whole lot of pieces to be put together, but if you connect Pine Grove Road down to Canton Street, you pick up a tremendous amount of sidewalk network going up Lake Charles and also going further up Pine Grove Road. And the irony here is that with the, with the scoring system that you've got here, the one section on Magnolia was rated fifteen, and that's the last section I would even think about putting a sidewalk in, because that, you would have needed retaining walls, you would have needed to take out a whole bunch of trees, and all you'd be doing is putting in a redundant sidewalk, because you already have sidewalk on the other side. We'd like to have sidewalk at least on one side between Lake Charles and the historic district, and I think that's a big, a big ask. And we were particularly offended when the culvert was repaired on Pine Grove Road a few years back, and the city didn't put any sidewalks in on the portion of the road that it blew up. Now, if I touch a, a, a public road with a development or a, or a construction project, I got to put a sidewalk in. You guys blow up the road and no sidewalks. That, that's just ludicrous to me. I think that the idea was that you're waiting to do a complete street up Pine Grove Road. Well, you know, wow, we, please don't do that. We don't want it, because the complete street puts in bicycle lanes, and we end up with faster traffic, more trucks, as it is. Pine Grove Road used to be no commercial traffic, but we've hit the threshold of traffic volume that you can't have that prohibition anymore according to state law. And yet, we, we don't get any improvement on the, on the safety, and the goat path thing on Pine Grove Road doesn't cut it, because we've got portions of, of bike lane that people walk in, so you're not seeing the goat path. So the, the picture that you want to make in terms of, you know, a criteria, it doesn't really work in the real world, especially when it comes to Pine Grove Road, one of the busiest roads in the city, one of the most unsafe to walk on, and one that would contribute to net aggregate connectivity with the, with the huge network of sidewalks beyond the intersection of Pine Grove and Lake Charles that really, I think, is unmatched. Just the, it's very frustrating. We've been asking for sidewalks for over twenty years, and I'm not alone in asking for those sidewalks. And yet, here we are, and you're still not talking about getting the maximum amount of connectivity for the amount of sidewalks that you do put in. You're going to fill in the gaps. Boy, it doesn't get better than Pine Grove Road yet. Pine Grove Road is down there at forty-six, that little piece of Magnolia that would have been useless, unfortunately, you guys voted against it, was rated at fifteen, so the scoring mechanism here is just so completely out of whack that, you know, do you really need scoring mechanism? How about you just drive around the city and use some common sense and go, this makes sense to put a sidewalk here. This doesn't make sense to put a sidewalk over there. It's not rocket science. It's common sense. That's all I got to say on this subject.
Thank you. Additional comments, questions from council? Do I have a motion?
Yeah, I move to approve item number ten with the two corrections to, that, that we've discussed as it relates to cost.
We've got a motion by Councilmember Tyser. Do we have a second? Second by Councilmember Judy. All those in favor, please raise your hands, and it passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is the City Attorney's Report. Mr. Davidson.
Thank you, Mayor. The first item I have is approval of a settlement agreement with Jason White, Alfred F. White, and Benita R. White, the Whites for the Hardware Store property at the intersection of South Atlanta Street and Oxbow Road, and an approval of the Budget Amendment three, five, zero, four, two, one, zero, one, dash, zero, two, dash, zero, eight, dash, zero, one, and the amount of two million, five hundred thousand dollars. As you know, in the original T-Splas project list, Oxbow Realignment was a Tier One project that was approved by the voters of Roswell. And further and so of that, Transportation Department brought a previous council agreement to purchase the Hardware Store located at six eighty-five South Atlanta Street. It's the corner of Oxbow and South Atlanta Street. The purchase was for a time of three years, which they believed would be enough time to complete the construction project. The Whites were given three million dollars, and in return, they were to get the property back after that three years with a pad-ready site. That time expired October twenty-fourth of two thousand and twenty. The city's in violation of the contract right now. The White's attorney has written a default letter to me, also using it as an anti-lithal notice in case there's future litigation. I've discussed this with council on many, many occasions, enclosure due to the litigious matter of it, and also in order to see if there was a way that we could purchase the property. Transportation had an independent certified appraiser value the property. If it was to be returned to the Whites as it was supposed to be, that estimated value is two million dollars. With the amount of time that the city is in default right now, plus the amount of time to fix the default, which could be, it's going to be at least twelve to twenty-four months after construction starts in order to get a pad-ready site, the city will be responsible for damages to that property owner. I was able to negotiate a settlement with the Whites and their attorney for two point five million dollars, and I would recommend approving that number, and with that, we would own the property free and clear. We would not be forced to have a pad-ready site. We would be able to save money on some relocation of pipe underneath the ground. We would not be required to actually construct an alleyway between two properties. Part of the agreement with the Whites was that they would have access on all four sides. That would not necessarily have to be the case. The appraisal that we received does not take into account that the intersection will be a signalized intersection when this project is complete. It would be higher at a signalized intersection than just the property along Highway nine, and I would recommend approval of this settlement agreement. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Council, any questions? Councilmember Zapata.
Thank you, Mayor Henry, and good morning, everybody. It's twelve, ten plus twelve, so where to start on this inexcusable, unusual, long project, badly and poorly managed project in the need of a second bailout from taxpayers' money without establishing any responsibility or accountability of the office of the City Administrator, Gary Palmer, the Office of the Transportation Department, Mohammed Rauf, and the Office of the Legal Department, David Davidson. So, just to remind you, on September twelfth, two thousand and seventeen, we elected officials were told by the Transportation Department that the total cost of this project will be between eight to nine million dollars. Today, today, without the two point five millions, we are eleven point three millions. So if we add tonight the two point five million, we're going to come to thirteen point eight million dollar projects, and you know what it means? Means sixty percent, sixty percent approximately above the number given in two thousand and seventeen. And now, with the two point five, give us a total of five point five millions paid to the White family that represent, just to put in perspective, represent forty percent of the total project today. Forty percent. So, saying that, we want to know why was the only one appraisal excluded, left out of the packet? So this is the appraisal that was left out of the packet. So we want to know what was this left out of the packet. My second question is, why did the Transportation Department started recently the construction knowing that you could not finish on time before October two thousand and twenty to honor the contract signed on October two thousand and seventeen? Yes, three, three, three years earlier with the White family. So those are my two questions.
Councilmember Zapata, I can address the appraisal part of that. The appraisal is not to be given out to the public until the agreement is complete and the purchase is done. So it would not be included in the packet. The agreement is included in the packet, and it's a certified independent appraisal that you were given in closure. That's why it was not put in the packet.
And I would also like to add that I have launched an investigation into this project. We have hired Gerard Davis to do that investigation. We're going to go from day one to the end, or at least up through this point in time, because what, we have been dealt a bad hand. We've been given, given a mess that folks, that were caused by previous mayor and council, and we've been given a mess to clean it up. So I want to do two things. Is one, I want to understand exactly what happened on this project so that it never happens again, and this independent investigation, I think, will show us exactly what went on here and how we can avoid anything like this in the future.
My second question-
Councilmember Ju, Councilmember Judy.
Yes, Mayor. So, thank you. You just said it. We're handed a mess by a previous mayor and council, and we must find out what happened so it doesn't happen to the city again. My focus this evening is on how to clean this mess up and cost to taxpayers in Roswell the least amount of money possible to get us out of this mess that's been created. Otherwise, playing politics here without what's best for the citizens of Roswell is dangerous and could cost millions and millions and millions more over the two point five settlement based upon the information that's coming to me. Mr. Davidson, can you tell us an estimate of damages the city is incurring after the October first failure to deliver a pad-ready site per month?
Just based on the prior agreement, and that's really all I could go on right now. If you take the three million dollars that was agreed to for three years, that would be about eighty-three thousand dollars a month that they could be asking for damages. Obviously, they would ask for more than that, because we are in violation under the contract. Prices have gone up, so that's-
So let's just-
Rough estimate.
Okay, so let's just start at eighty-three thousand dollars a month, starting in October. So we're approaching half a million bucks already. Looking at the dates you said before, that's twelve to twenty-four months to completion. So just do the math, it ate just a estimate of eighty-three thousand a month for twelve to twenty-four months from now, adding the five months before that. And you can, you can see where that number is. If we accept, Mr. Davidson, if we accept the two point five million dollar settlement, we're free and clear of all former and future damages, plus we own the site that we can then in turn sell to recoup some of this, some of the damages that we've incurred.
That is correct.
Okay. I've got two more questions. Mr. Roth, or Mr. Del Ross, whoever's speaking. If we chose to say the course is the twelve to twenty-four month project- project, uh, time, um, schedule realistic to completion?
Yes, uh, we, we were saying actually, uh, by eighteen to twenty-four months from October two thousand and twenty.
Okay.
That is very realistic. I have had a conversation with the contractor just recently. But we also need to keep in mind, there is one more issue that's being discussed, and that also needs to be resolved before the contractor can get mobilized on the site again.
Okay, so looking at that, um, we had to turn a pad-ready site over. Should we, um, do this? The cost of a pad-ready site on top of the damages that are incurring monthly would be what? About seven, I think it was seven hundred thousand dollars?
There were multiple things, uh, the pad-ready stipulations for the agreement from, uh, three plus years ago was a hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. There is this, uh, alley, alley that's shown. The cost of that alley is about two hundred thousand dollars. So if we were, uh, still agreeing to give a pad-ready site back to the property owner, that agreement also included construction of that alley at a cost of about two hundred thousand dollars. But if the city purchased this property, then we don't have to build that Oxbow alley. It's not necessary, uh, not a huge benefit to the city's network. So we will not, we will recommend not to build that Oxbow alley anymore. And then there is this, uh, pipe underneath the hardware store site that needs to be relocated from underneath the site. It's just clipping a corner, uh, so that will also have to be relocated at a cost of over four hundred. It's about four hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. But if the city purchased the property, it could stay where it is, and it only clips a little corner of that property.
Okay, so just doing some rough math in these numbers that, um, I'm seeing here. It would far exceed the two point five million dollars that is being offered tonight. And we would not have the property to then in turn sell to recoup some of the money. Plus, we would be the, um, Mr. Davidson, we would be at the mercy of a judge at that point to, uh, basically tell us what damages are occurred.
That is correct.
All right, so I, I guess my point is here is, is I think that, you know, at this point, um, in my opinion, not voting for this this evening at two point five million, it's a very, very dangerous thing. Yes, I don't like it. I don't think anybody here likes it. I think everybody here deserves an explanation of why we're here. But if we do not vote for this two point five million this evening, we could cost the taxpayers a lot more, and we won't have the property to regain some of the money. I, I think we're stuck in a situation in which this needs to be approved this evening, and non-approval is, is, I believe, very dangerous. And we're putting it at the hands of the court, construction, weather, a lot of variables. So, uh, that's my take on it, and I'd love to hear any other, uh, thoughts.
Councilmember Wilson.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Councilmember Judy, for outlining, lining, um, all those costs. I have a question about if, if it's purchased and the city owns the property, approximately how long do you think it would be before it could be put back up to say, back up on the market? And as far as like existing zoning and what sort of, um, I guess, desirable uses we might be able to place on the property when it does go back on the market?
So, uh, a- as I mentioned before, uh, I have spoken with the contractor, uh, from October two thousand and twenty. They believe they should be able to finish in another eighteen to twenty-four months. And again, you know, that's also contingent upon, it's not just the main contractor that is working at the site. It's a lot of other utility companies. The contractor is just dependent on every other utility company to finish before they can finish their, uh, their projects. These are good, good estimates on the, on the timelines. And please also remember, as I mentioned before, we still have one more issue that needs to be resolved. And we need all these issues resolved before the contractor can re-mobilize on the, on the site.
Councilmember Palermo.
Thank you, Mayor Henry. So I, I agree with the numbers that Councilman Judy, uh, laid out. So, uh, I think it's a very bad situation, but at the end of the day, also need to stop the bleeding. And, uh, and, and again, hopefully sooner than later, able to sell it with, you know, uh, and, and recoup some of the money. The one, the one thing that I'll, I'll point out, which is, and, 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 you know, uh, definitely glad to hear about the, uh, the investigation. Hope it's, it's one certainly that's, that's unbiased and look at. At the end of the day, you know, we've, everybody except for Councilmember Hall, we've all been here for over three years while, while that, while there was seemingly plenty of time to get the project done, to suddenly not even being close to done. And I think we all agree that if, if two years ago, if three years ago, heck, if one and a half years ago, if the city administrator comes to this council and says, you know, we've, we've got a deadline that two years from now, something has to be built. It's not even be close. Heck, one year from now, something's going to be built, it's not even close, and we are going to be hemorrhaging over eighty thousand dollars per month. I, I'm completely confident that this entire council would have, uh, would have probably moved, changed things up, done something a year ago, two years ago, three years ago. And that, that didn't happen, and that's, that's unfortunate. Uh, and, and it's frustrating, but nonetheless, uh, to Councilman Judy's point, we don't like the situation that we're in, but this is the situation we're in, and we do need to make sure we're, we're, we're making the best decision and best vote tonight for taxpayers.
Yes.
So Mayor, if I could clarify one thing, so we hired the contractor at the end of the year two thousand and nineteen. Uh, at that time, the contractor, the, the, the pad-ready stipulation and the deadline of October two thousand and twenty, the contractor was completely aware of it, and they were on schedule to finish the pad-ready site and hand it over to, uh, the property owner when they started the work. But then a lot of things happened. You know, Georgia Power was going to do a lot of work before the contractor could do, you know, the, the heavy construction activity because of COVID. There was a lot of delay that was caused, and there were some other reasons as well that I mentioned before to the council, uh, that caused the delay. So those are the reason, but at the beginning, when we awarded the contract, the contractor, you know, they knew and they agreed to the deadline of October two thousand and twenty. So two years, three years ago, we, we did not know we were not going to be able to make the deadline. I, I just wanted to just very clearly state that, that it's not, this is not a two, three year old issue. This all just evolved in the last twelve months. You know, pandemic being one reason, and Georgia Power has, you know, cited that reason as a cause of the delay in their work. So it's just a lot that has happened in the last twelve to eighteen months that has put us into this situation.
Additional comments, questions from council? Uh, we've got some folks in the public that like to speak. And before we go to the public, I would like to reiterate that because we had some comments about, um, deep-sixing the Oxbow project, I just want to reiterate that was a T plus, tier-one project. So that was a referendum on the part of the voters of the city, right? So that is not an option for us. Um, and I believe we've got, the first person that would like to speak is Sally McKenzie.
Good morning, Mayor and Council. Thank you very much for, um, staying up to, to hear us speak. A couple of questions, um, I'm glad to hear, first of all, you're going, you're going to launch an investig- investigation. Mr. Roth stated that the project was awarded to a contractor in late two thousand and nineteen. I'm wondering why it took so long to award the project if indeed the deal was done on the, in two thousand and seventeen? I'm also, I'd also like a very specific answer. I know he said that the contractor felt like or believed they could deliver this project, but, um, prior to that, it had been stated that this was an eighteen, uh, eighteen to twenty-four month project timeline. Um, and there, we were talking about less than ten months to deliver it. Um, regarding COVID, um, my understanding is that in the construction industry, and specifically in the transportation, construction, um, arena, it wasn't much of an issue, um, that actually was a positive or it actually was helpful in many regards. I know G-Dot got a lot done. Um, so I'm, I don't know that, um, the COVID, the pandemic is a legitimate excuse. Um, also, I, I think, give me one second, I think that's it. I guess I would also like to know, I just want to make sure that everyone, that no one else on January, in January of two thousand and twenty, when the first shovel went in the ground, that no one, there was no one that thought this project could not be delivered as promised. Because going forward with this project at that point was, for lack of a better word, stupid. And I also want to just hi- again, I want to highlight this problem, this, this issue as the reason that we need a transportation committee to be involved with transportation initiatives and to be another pair of eyes for projects that start before councils, who people who come on council and continue after you all leave. There needs to be another presence, um, keeping an eye on the timeline and the process. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Uh, the next person that would like to speak is Doug Fernandez, but I believe he dropped off the line. We might be a little past his bedtime. I know we're past mine. And then we've got Pat Cafrey.
Yes, hello, Mayor and Council. I appreciate you giving me time at this late hour. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, yeah, this is a real mess. I think, uh, there's a lot of concern amongst the citizens of Roswell. So, um, a lot of upset. So I think it would behoove, uh, Mayor and Council to, and, you know, redo a good job of informing citizens what's going on. I think the idea of inquiry is, is badly needed and needs to be very open and transparent. I mean, said all that, you know, I think, uh, we, we are where we are, we need to move forward. But amongst the comments that I've seen from people are the fact that this project doesn't do a lot for citizens of Roswell. Um, it's just mainly enabling people to drive through an easier passage and, um, that it's going to look pretty ugly. Uh, one of the things I brought up to engineering about the story a year ago, was how do we, you know, solve some of those things? But they'd said at the time that they were too late into the process to, to change the design or to do much. Right now, it's from the thousand things, you will be changing the design, you will be, you know, we've got a delay. Some of the design is going to, going to change. The alleyway you talked about is not going to be there, um, and, and so on. So I would ask Mayor and Council to consider how we can make that area more of an asset. And what I'd like to suggest is that it gets made into a park. And I, um, I, I would give the old Fourth Ward Park as an example. That was an area that was going to be a bunch of retention ponds. Someone had the idea of converting it into an indoor park. And now it's really an asset there in that area. Now, I would like the, the city to consider, are there ways in which you can make that indoor park and then put trails through there that will connect the existing trails, um, you know, from along Oxbow? Make that tra- trail continuous that would connect over to Mimosa, would allow people to, to walk around that area a lot better. Trail that would then connect up to, to Maple, enable people to walk over to, um, to, to the mill. So in terms of that walkability, that's very important in Roswell. It would be a bit of a hub there, and it would, and, you know, tie all those things together. So it would then become a beautiful asset to the city rather than just being functional intersection. Okay, that's it.
Thank you, sir. Uh, the next person and last person from the public that would like to speak is Mr. Jason Yell.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes.
Um, this is an epic fail, and, uh, I can save you the trouble of an investigation. He, this is pretty obvious. It's the city attorney, it's the transportation director. And if you're going to pay this money tonight, you've got to fire these two, period. It is on their shoulders. It is a function of bad design and bad planning. That puts it on transportation, and it's also a function of a bad contract. That puts it on your city attorney. Now, for two and a half million dollars, you could hire really top quality, qualified people to fill these positions. And this isn't the first time these two people have cost the city a lot of money. And there's no excuse for it. You pay the money, you lick your wounds, but you fire the people who are responsible. And I don't know about anybody else, but I am so tired of there being no accountability in the city of Roswell. People foul up and they keep their jobs. They ride out to a pension, and that's not right. It's not fair, it's not reasonable. You don't need an investigation. Fire the city attorney, fire the transportation director. And as far as your city administrator, who should be on top of these things, because isn't that his job? Or is his job just to sit there looking smug? I don't know. I have no clue what your city administrator.
That is unnecessary dialogue and accusation. I am not going to listen to any more of it. Uh, you are not an expert in this field. Uh, you are not an expert, period. So, um, I am launching an investigation. It's an independent investigation, and I will not allow you to attack staff in that manner. Please understand that it's inappropriate and unprofessional. Are there additional comments from council? Councilmembers Zapata.
Thank you, Mayor. We also received a email today from, uh, Mrs. Janet Russell regarding this topic. Uh, I could read the email with her comments, since, again, she have trouble to get into Zoom. You know, the technology, the time and everything is hard. You have to wait online for year hours, you might get disconnected. So if you don't mind, Mayor, I, I would like to read the email we all received, Mayor and Council, today, February eighth.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. So Janet Russell, Monday, February eighth, two thousand and twenty-one. And quote, I would, you know, I'm reading, so quote, "Stop this insanity. In two thousand and seventeen, I was present at the council meeting when the payment being made to the white family owners of the Roswell Hardware Store proper- property was three million. I questioned this amount because one point five was for the land building and the other one point five was for the projected lost income while construction of the product was in place. I questioned if R-DOT had examined the financial records of the company to determine the real income. R-DOT, no, but we did look at other hardware stores in Roswell. Me, we don't have any other hardware store in Roswell. R-DOT, well, we all look at Lowe's and Home Depot. Me, I own a travel agency, but I don't, but I don't compare with American Express." Mr. Zapata, at the same meeting, had the same question, and the reply was no reply. Later, as I stood at the podium with Mr. Eisenberg, who was supposed to answer my questions, it was allowed at the time. He casually mentioned that we gave the land where the new pad was to be installed to the family. Me, you gave the land? R-DOT, yes. Me, well, what value do you put on this land? Because if it's a gift, there is will be a tax liability that we need, that the new owners should be advised for the value. And there was a silence, again, no answer. Later, that week, later that week, I received an email from R-DOT employee who told me that the land wasn't really a gift, but rather an exchange. We exchanged the land on the south side of the building for the land on the north side of the building. We exchanged the land on the south side of the building for the land on the north side of the building. So in effect, we paid $3 million for an aluminum building and the, the unknown lost income. And now we are going to pay $2.5 million to them. Again, for land, they, they already got paid for, but were also given, something is wrong with this picture and it isn't pretty. This whole project has taken on a life of its own and I have to wonder why. A traffic light at the intersection will have solved the problem and could have been completed in less than 30 days. Simply and cost and safety effective. The stress that will be put on Mimosa Boulevard hasn't been calculated, but traffic will exit at 7B, travel Holcombe Bridge Road to Grand Bridge to Oxbow and then cross over to Mimosa to avoid waiting for the two traffic lights at the square so they can hurry on back to East Cobb. Or they could, or they will cut through and turn right to create a long jam at Magnolia and Mimosa to return on Pine Grove to East Cobb. There has been no regard for the residents of the area and our quality of life yet. Yet we pay for it, not just in dollars, but in healthy and safety. I now appeal at the relegation of decision-making to RDOT because you think they are the experts. They know how to poor block top. They know little if nothing about finance and accountability. I have witnessed over the years a complete lack of project management. I could give you many examples of the poor management if you ask me. Stop this insanity right now. The city of Roswell got connected, conned by the property owners and they are loving it. But the residents of Roswell are not, and you are supposed to represent us. Janet Hidalgo Russell, Roswell resident and property taxpayers, 1973.
Additional comments, questions from council? Do I have a motion? Councilmember Judy.
Yes, Mayor. Like I said before, we, none of us like this, but to stop the bleeding, to save the taxpayers of Roswell, possibly millions of dollars here and to get the T-Splopped one project on the road as voted on by the citizens, I motion to approve the settlement for $2.5 million.
We've got a motion by council member, yes, council member-
Sorry, Mayor, and just in that motion, you know, supporting the launching of an investigation by the mayor.
Motion by council member Judy, do I have a second? Second by council member Wilson. All those in favor, please raise your hands. And it is council member Judy, council member Wilson, council member Hall, Tyser and Palermo. All those opposed? Councilmember Zapata, the motion carries. Mr. Davidson.
Thank you, Mayor. The next item I have is a recommendation for closure to discuss personnel litigation and real estate.
Do I have a motion for closure?
We motion to defer.
Do you want to defer it? Okay, if you want to kick the can down the road, we've, we've got some stuff to get done, but, you know, whatever. I mean, it's already 20 to one, so I'm not sure why we can't stay another 20 minutes, but-
Let's, let's do 20 minutes.
Yeah, I think we have some things to discuss, so I would-
So is there a motion on the floor to defer? Did you make a motion, Councilmember Palermo?
Motion for closure, please.
Councilmember Judy, motion to go to closure? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by council member Wilson, all those in favor? Please, please, it's unanimous. Thank you, we are adjourned.